Okay, everybody. Let's begin our meeting for tonight. If everybody could please rise and help me salute our flag. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here.
Very good. Do we have any requests for continuance of any public hearings? Colleagues? No? Very good. We do have a special presentation tonight. I do mean a very, very special presentation. And I will go to the podium to be able to make that presentation. Very good. We do have just one presentation tonight, but it's a very special one. And I'm very happy to welcome our own Public Works Director, Cliff Finley, to the podium. The council and the community at large know that Thousand Oaks would not be the incredible city it is without the dedicated work of our Public Works staff. They ensure that our infrastructure, our facilities, our public services are efficient, effective, and well-maintained. I, in fact, had a personal experience with that this morning when I was doing my morning walk, walking up Campus Drive, seeing work being done. While it seems like the rest of the world's struggled to function these past two years due to COVID, our Public Works staff remained on the job, keeping the city running. Mr. Finley, on behalf of the City Council, we thank you and your staff for your dedication to the city of Thousand Oaks and recognize your efforts with this proclamation naming May National Public Works Week.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much. First off, I want to thank Mayor Engler and the City Council on behalf of all of the members of our Public Works team. This is just a small percentage here tonight. We take pride in serving the residents of Thousand Oaks and could not do it nearly as well if it weren't for clear direction and support provided by the City Council. So, thank you for that. The theme of this year's National Public Works Week is Ready and Resilient, which highlights Public Works' role as first responders to emergencies. Public Works professionals help keep Thousand Oaks strong by managing our transportation, streets, water, wastewater, landscaping, stormwater, solid waste, sustainability, and engineering services. These services help make Thousand Oaks a great place to live, work, and recreate. As mentioned previously, we'll be hosting an open house during Public Works Week at our municipal service center. Guided tours of the facility are being offered on May 17th and 18th, and as of today, more than 650 students and interested residents have signed up. It's my understanding we may have a few spaces left, so if any of the council members would like to come, or any of the members of the public, please contact us. Reservations and more information can be found at our Public Works Week website at Thank you very much.
And thank you, Cliff, for all you've done. And I know that as unaccustomed as your members are to being out in the front, I'm going to ask you all to get up in front of the dais, get a picture, and we'll have the council come down and join you. One thing I also would like to add is that this year, for the first year, tours will be held in Spanish for those people who are primarily Spanish speakers. So, please come down, see what our Public Works does, and join with us and why we really appreciate their hard work.
Mayor, observation question.
Yes, sir.
Is this a possibility for a career option for perhaps some of our residents that want to get into this industry?
There's always the possibility. Let me turn it over to our city manager, who does that type of thing.
Absolutely. Toaks.org/jobs, we have Public Works opportunities across the spectrum available out there, and there seems to be more every week at this point.
Blame commercial advertising.
Very good. I think I'll turn it over to the clerk at this time for our public comments instructions.
This is a time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, first up, online, we have Karen Martin. Karen, please go ahead. Karen, if you can hear me, we have you up first, so please go ahead.
Hello.
Very good. You're coming in.
Can you hear me now?
You're coming in, fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. First, thank you very much, Karen Martin, Thousand Oaks, Lynn Road specifically. I've been coming to you guys for years, decades, trying to get some help, and I finally got a response from the council to contact the police department. And funny thing, they've sent me back to you. I was sitting out last night, just trying to have a beer in my backyard, and people were burning rubber, they were jackrabbitting off the light here, racing loud. It's not nice. It really isn't. And it's a small percentage of the drivers, but it is concerning, especially since we've lost lives here on Lynn Road, and they certainly don't stay at my yard. And I couldn't really understand why no one is paying attention. Today, I spoke with a gentleman, I haven't heard back from Carl Patterson yet, Sergeant Patterson, but today I was told that they had to use their resources, they had to delegate their resources. And this is the only north-south arterial in the city, and I don't understand the reluctance to patrol it unless it's because you like to elevate car culture, or because we have a police chief who doesn't think that loud mufflers have anything to do with flaunting, or speed, or accidents. And I know the young man who died was involved in car meets, and I was born with a wrench in my hand, and I love the sound of a supercharged engine. I know the difference between a Ducati and a Harley just by the sound. And I'm coming to ask you to please hire more police officers, get some patrol down here. You all built pads down here in '98 because there was a problem, and traffic has done nothing but get worse. We've had three accidents here, even though the chief tells me that accidents are down 10%. So, there is definitely a unique situation going on in my little stretch of the world, but I do not understand why Simi Valley, who's 12 and 1/2 square miles smaller, has 40 more police officers. That's almost 50% more officers. We have 95. You know, you need to serve your public, you need to serve everyone, and I'm asking you, please, do something about the traffic in this town, write a ticket for a loud muffler, save lives. I don't want these children to die, I don't want these old men to die who think that they're driving crazy. I don't want the people who, the soccer moms who are texting as they leave their houses to go down Lynn Road. I care more than you do, and I don't know why. So, the police are asking me to come to you, and that's what I'm doing. We're a rich community, we should be able to afford people to patrol. Let's start doing some preventative, please.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Inga Jokobovic. Thank you. I'm sorry about mispronouncing your name.
Thank you. I'm an owner and an operator of an assisted living community, Hillcrest Royal on Hillcrest Drive. I have been doing it for 32 years. The seniors of my community are elderly who still enjoy taking walks and sitting out on our patio. Some of them still drive. We now have a homeless encampment on our property, about 20-plus individuals on a strip of city land that is bordering our community, right behind the patio and the parking lot. We're talking about five feet away. The encamped are using our shrubbery for restrooms. They're not loud, but this is clearly a health issue. They're using our trash compartments. And I am concerned about the 90 residents that live in our place. The strip of land that I'm referring to has initially been developed by city of Thousand Oaks to afford the community and other neighbors a place to walk, and skateboard, and bike, and enjoy the nature. But about 10 years ago, the city, because of the similar problem, had to do something about it and ripped out all the vegetation and replaced it with small boulders to address the issue that was happening at that time. But now the boulders are not a deterrent. They're building sheds and shelters on top of the rocks and trying to use up all the little free strip of land that's available. So, I'm just asking the city to help me solve this problem because I'm receiving numerous complaints, and I am, from my residents, their families, and my potential clients. My business will not survive this. So, please help. I've called the police, but there's nothing they can do, and I'm here to see if the city can come up with some kind of protection. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Rondi Guthrie.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, members of City Council. My name is Rondi Guthrie, and I'm the Vice President of Athens Services. Thank you for the opportunity to provide another update on the recycling and waste hauling service transition in Thousand Oaks. And I first just want to say how nice it is to be here in person with you, and also on the night that you are honoring your Public Works staff, because as you can imagine, I have the opportunity to work very closely with many of them, and also serve in Leadership Conejo with a few of the folks that were up here. So, I can definitely attest to what a wonderful job they do here in your city. When I addressed council in February, I was pleased to report that the transition was going smoothly and staying on schedule. At that time, Athens 100 team members dedicated to Thousand Oaks were already providing dependable service reliability for the 38,000 residential and 1,200 commercial customers here in town. This evening, I have more good news to share. Athens has successfully completed our service transition within our promised three-month timeframe. We have completed the delivery of 130,000 brand-new waste containers to customers throughout the city, and removed the old containers from homes and businesses. As you know, those containers include new green bins that enable us to provide recycling services for food scraps and other organics waste to all of Thousand Oaks for the first time. The green bin recycling is an essential component of SB 1383, the state law designed to help fight climate change. We believe Thousand Oaks is now Ventura County's first city to reach full compliance with this landmark legislation. this landmark legislation. We are delighted to be your partners in this new area of sustainability in Thousand Oaks. We continue to provide very high rates of service reliability to our customers, with reports of missed pickups or other service inquiries falling dramatically since we launched our service in January. Service inquiries to date in April have fallen by approximately 80% compared to our first month. When there is an issue brought to our attention, the great majority are resolved in 24 hours or less. Outreach and education remain a very important part of our mission in Thousand Oaks. These efforts include publishing a quarterly newsletter, visiting schools, and working with a variety of groups such as the Rotary Club, Youth Commission, and Council on Aging. We also answer questions for the frequent visitors we get at our new Sustainability Center. Overall, we are incredibly heartened by the response we have received here in town. It has been a pleasure for our team to get to know this wonderful community. We build these relationships every day through community partnerships, contributing to schools, youth sports leagues, Kiwanis Club, Rotary Club, Ventura County Leadership Academy, Ventura Land Trust, Safe Passage, Youth Foundation, and many more. It also helps to have a bit of fun, like we did at the Arbor Earth Day event earlier this month, and of course, at the T.O. Block Party and Lombardi Trophy Tour this past weekend, where we were able to roll out our giant inflatable bounce house modeled after an Athens truck. We look forward to building even deeper roots in Thousand Oaks. I'll hurry up here. People can call our local customer service line, visit us in our Sustainability Center, or go online. And our whole team is incredibly grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Do you have a question? We have a question from Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Thank you for the update. Things are going much more smoothly, and so I think I only referred one email to you in the last, I don't know, several weeks, so that was really good. You mentioned that Thousand Oaks may be the first city in Ventura County to comply with SB 1383, and so what, how may you know that? Or how do we establish that we are the first city?
Yeah, I think primarily having all new barrels and the color scheme that coincides with the state legislation, you know, that can, I think haulers have several years to actually bring new barrels into town and do the outreach and education on what those new barrels mean and what goes where, and we're already doing that here in town, and started that, you know, on day one, January 1st.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Rondi. I phoned her last week about a problem, and she didn't have, she was driving her car, she just got to pull over and to take down some notes, pencil and paper, and I said, "No, please, don't go to that trouble, just wait till you get back to the office." And not only did she contact me then, but then she took care of the situation in about two days, so I want to thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have Rena Sepovoda online. Ms. Sepovoda.
Oh, she's for Item 8A, Mayor.
I'm sorry. That is all of our public speakers, then? Very good. Let me turn it over to our city manager for comments.
All right, thanks. Mr. Mayor, wanted to specifically talk about the homeless situation that the folks from Hillcrest Royale brought up. I see that our Assistant Chief Cook is already out in the lobby with them, a situation that we're well aware of. As a matter of fact, our team was out there this morning. This is a product, some may know that Caltrans just recently completed a pretty thorough clean-out of encampments under the 101 freeway and in the 23, and that has had the effect of having some folks that have unfortunately relocated into other areas. These areas, the city attorney and I have spoken, they seem to be, at least in a number of occasions, a violation of our camping and public ordinance, and so our team of liaison officers are working to that effect. There was actually an arrest that was made today, and so there is active enforcement out there, very aware of the situation from the top of our law enforcement channels all the way through, as well as our administrative channels and Public Works channels. So we will very much stay on top of that. As the speaker mentioned, we have had problems in the past out there, we've been very proactive at trying to address those, and so it's going to be a situation that we keep a very, very close eye on. And Mrs. Martin brought up a number of items. We continue to have regular dialogue with Mrs. Martin in trying to address concerns around speeding that she's experiencing out there, and so we do have law enforcement resources, substantial law enforcement resources. The City of Thousand Oaks pays $31 million a year to the Sheriff's Department for substantial, top-notch law enforcement resources, and we look to spread those wherever there are needs and issues and adjust accordingly. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Next up, we have Item 7, which is our consent calendar. Any questions or anyone on our council would like to pull something?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull 7C, the Conejo Canyon's Bridge at Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, please.
Okay, 7C.
And D, if you don't mind, Mayor.
C and D, Mr. Adams.
D as in David.
D, David, and Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I'm looking for the number right now, one moment. F as in Frank, as in Frank Schiller.
So we have, there you go, we have F, David, F Frank, D David, and C.
I was going to do F too, but she beat me to it, so.
So we have quite a bit of interest. So is anybody willing to make a motion for the balance of the?
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Well, let's go through our polled items. Mr. McNamie.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Finley, I think these will be questions for you regarding this. In my journey as council member, when I first came on board, the folks at the end and dead ends into Avenue de Los Obalos to Wildwood Park, the first two blocks that extend adjacent to the parking lot there made some very compelling arguments about the quality of life falling off after this is moved from a local park to a regional park that pulls people in from San Diego to Palmdale Riverside, San Bernardino, to come see our beautiful park there that has a year-round waterfall. And what they originally purchased in their home years ago has now become a public nuisance for them in quality of life, and it's been on their list of, can we address this as a city? It's gone before COSCA, it's gone before Recreation and Parks. The bridge that we're proposing here to go to the Hill Canyon Plant is a potential relief for those folks to have that parking that is overwhelmed with about 1,000 cars parking on a Saturday and Sunday. This would perhaps be an answer for them. Can you share with me some options that the community can look forward to to help improve the quality of life back where it was when they first purchased the homes?
Yes, so this bridge will connect trails down at Wildwood, of Wildwood Park, actually the lower end, down near the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant. There's already a parking lot down there, and there's additional parking available. And this will allow someone to park in that parking lot, walk across one bridge that's already there, walk along the creek, up the trails, and then cross another bridge, cross back, cross the peak to continue up into Wildwood. It'll be a great access, and frankly, not so steep right away, which would be a good thing, in my opinion, a lot nicer for families. And it will be construction, with this action, construction will begin this fall, and should be completed by next summer. So we're excited about it, and it should provide a second trail access, a second trailhead to that same area of the park.
To reduce the popularity of what currently exists there at the end of Avenue de Los Obalos and that neighborhood, any ideas on how we can better educate and direct people to start using the Hillcrest location when it finally is completed? Because many of the people there already have been using the one at Avenue de Los Obalos and trying to retrain them to go elsewhere. Any plans in place to help redirect that traffic and get the quality of life back for that neighborhood?
Well, this is, definitely falls under CRPD's influence as well, but we will do an education outreach process. Again, I think the location of the new trailhead may be closer for a lot of people, and definitely in the western Ventura County. So that'll, as soon as they realize it's available, it should, you know, it's closer distance, so it should be, it should be great.
When I first came into this issue and studied it, I found that the big answer, the bottleneck, was getting this bridge in there at the Hillcrest parking site, or the Hillcrest site there in bottom of the grade. And now that will be in, you said, end of next year, not this year, but next year, is that correct?
Summer '23, so next summer, a year, kind of a year from now, sometime that summer.
Why so long to put a bridge in?
So the first steps, once a ward is done, this fall, will be fabrication of that bridge. There's actually an environmental requirement, there's a bird breeding season of which we can't work in the springtime at the site, so a majority of the construction work will be done later in that summer.
Terrific. So there's a light at the end of the tunnel for the neighborhood for potential answers? Possibly.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Thank you for your good work, and again, thank you to the Public Works Department. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on Item B?
B? C.
C, I'm sorry, C Charlie.
I'll make the motion on Item C. City Manager, Mr. Powers, did you have an observation? No. Item C, I'd like to move that.
Item C. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
We have another polled item, Item D, David, by Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as befitting Public Works Week, we have quite the project that we're working on on Willer Road. Some of the residents may have noticed, it's a road that runs parallel to the 101 freeway in between Hampshire and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and I thought either Cliff or not, or might want to come up and talk a little bit about why this project is important, what it used to look like, and what the end product will look like.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay, Cliff.
Councilmember Adam. Yeah, well, let's talk about what it used to look like first. This was a very, an older segment, a roadway segment, a sidewalk section here and there, but no complete sidewalk, very narrow roadway, pushed up against a Caltrans rusted fence. It was all around, just not very attractive, not very welcoming, and definitely not welcoming to pedestrians or bicyclists. So today, we have now have a sidewalk connection all the way from Hampshire, all the way down to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and actually, all the way up to Hillcrest. It's safe, there's a Class 2 bike lane through a majority of that stretch. We've added a pedestrian crossing, which is important to the neighborhood at that location. Crossing from the north side of the street to the south side of the street, it's actually got flashing lights, because that is a busy street. The driveways are now uniform, the whole frontage improvements have been completed for all those residents. And again, many of them had, there was a, they drove through a gravel median, or not median, shoulder before they got to their driveway. So it's been improved, it's been cleaned up, we're adding streetlights at that pedestrian crossing. We've, things that nobody will know, but we did also is replace all the water lines in that street that needed repair. They're, again, they're 40, 50 years old, and took care of some flooding issues that occurred. So all around, it's, and when we're all said and done, that section of the roadway will get repaved, so.
Thank you, Cliff. Yeah, you really brought the road into the 21st century before it was something out of the 1950s, so, and it's an important road for the connectivity that it offers, just one more way for people to get around on bikes or on foot, and kind of connects a portion of Westlake Village, you could say, to downtown Thousand Oaks. So great job, looking forward to it being done, and appreciate the work.
Mayor, again, question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Finley, what was, again, the date that anticipated completion for this project?
This project may be done by the end of May, or at least not much past the middle of June.
Superb, thank you.
And, Mr. Finley, I also had one quick question for you, Bob Engler up here. This item tonight was a, what some people would describe as a cost overrun, coming back for a little more money. Is there, how, explain to folks how these types of things happen, and what you're addressing by having this a little bit of extra money.
So this change order, which is probably near one of the final ones of the contract, is actually, a majority of it is additional work that was, that was not originally in the contract documents. One of those pieces was a widening of the street, there was a development that had not occurred on the south side of the street. That was between, let me just get that right, between Skyline Drive and Conejo Ridge. So we were actually, in the original bid documents, were narrowing the roadway and not constructing the improvements through that section. That project moved forward, and the property owner decided to go ahead and do their improvements on their private property, so we were able to extend the public improvements to the full width for that entire block, which was great, because at some point in time, we might have had to do it in the future and come back with a smaller contract. So now it's done, it's done all at once. The second portion of the additional work, which was a major portion, is the replacement of some water fittings. We had included in the contract to replace much of the pipe and the valves and the surfaces, but when we got in there and actually looked at the fittings, they required replacement, and there's about 13 of them, they're fairly large, so that's the water portion. So again, it was additional work, some project enhancements, it's a lot of coordination with private property through there. We have to make grades work, and it's never quite perfect when you're adjusting public right-of-way to existing improvements, people's driveways, essentially.
Thank you. So this is sort of like doing a repair at home, open the wall and find out things you didn't know about?
That, and you get into it, and you realize, wow, that doesn't look very good, we should replace that while we're here, because it'll be a lot cheaper now than it will be after we pave the street, and then we get a leak sometime down the road.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McNamie.
Just a quick question. In construction and development, when you do a change order, sometimes you're paying double or triple than if it was included with the original quote. Where are we with any upcharges relative to this change order? Is it what would come in line if it was originally included, or is it additional because it's a change order and we're paying double or triple?
Most of this, most, almost all of this work, we were able to use existing unit prices when we bid a project, based on earthwork quantities, grading, sidewalk lengths, et cetera, so all we were, all we had to do was extend those, add those additional quantities.
Your team does good work, thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, a comment from Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Well, I just want to say thank you, because I drive that street on a regular basis, and I actually do love the very narrow lanes now, it's kind of like a slalom, and so I love driving that without hitting the poles there, the plastic ones. It's very narrow. But I wanted to say that I'm impressed that you are finishing the project on time, maybe even earlier, and yes, it is a little bit over the initial budget, but it's money well-invested in our infrastructure. Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, there's over $3 million worth of federal and state grants in this project, so.
Oh, and then.
More than 50%.
I just wanted to repeat, maybe putting a reflector on that curb out at Manzanitas, at night, it's hard to see.
Yeah, we've noted that, we've got our traffic folks taking a look at that. That is a curb extension for that crosswalk, so it'll also be a lot more visible once the crosswalk signs are in. You'll see that a lot right now, they're all covered up.
Great. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
Move D.
Very good. Ms. Rodriguez.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
And Ms. Bill De La Peña. And Ms. Bill De La Peña, item F, Frank?
And we have Frank with us tonight. All right. That is inclusionary housing program feasibility. And because this has been discussed so many times over many years, it's now finally happening, an update to our housing program feasibility, inclusionary housing program. So I wanted to see if Mr. Parker could talk to us about that, give the public an update as to what the status is. Thank you.
Yes, please. Good evening, council. So this item before you this evening is to move forward with a contract to hire a consultant to move to the next phase in the project. As many of you may recall, last fall, we spoke about this project moving forward early this year. We're currently ahead of the schedule that we brought to council in the fall of last year. This particular item will allow us to contract with the consultant to prepare a nexus study, to actually study the cost difference between market rate housing being built in our city and the various affordable levels from very low to moderate. It's a required step in terms of preparing an inclusionary housing ordinance. And as you may also recall, this is listed as a work program in the housing element that the city council endorsed and we submitted to the state for final approval.
All right. So what could be the earliest we could look at this?
If we're allowed to move forward and contract with the consultant, we'll meet with them to determine the timeframe in which they need to prepare the study. And at that time, we'll move forward in completing that actual work. But it's something that we won't be able to finalize until we get the consultant on board.
Is that something that could potentially happen by the end of the year? I mean, here it is, end of April?
It's definitely something that we're efforting for, but as I mentioned, it's a role that the consultant will have to play in actually preparing those nexus studies. And part of that will be comparison of other inclusionary housing ordinances that are available in this local area. So preparation of that work will take some time, and it is extremely technical in nature, which is why we're enlisting a consultant to actually prepare that work.
All righty then. Thank you for that update.
Thank you much.
Very good. Any other comments?
Yes.
Calvin, I think he's got it.
Did you call on me? I didn't know.
Not yet, Mr. Ed. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
This language is a little difficult to interpret. I know that you use this type jargon in the, working with state and federal government. But it says approved services with Kaiser Marston Associates for preparation of inclusionary housing program feasibility and non-residential linkage nexus analysis and fee studies. The amount of $206,000, exactly, what does that mean?
So you're, you're very correct. It is jargon that's common in the planning industry. And to sort of place it in layman's terms, it is a study, a fee, that in order to prepare, we have to do a study. One relates specifically to the cost of building housing for residential and what developers would contribute to help the city meet their affordable housing needs. And it's something that's necessary because without incentive from the city, we aren't meeting our affordable categories from extremely low to moderate. And it's not something the development community would do on their own. The linkage fee that you're referring to, non-residential, would be something that's applied to businesses on the commercial side to help us meet our affordable categories in terms of arena numbers.
Well, what, what exactly would this produce? What, what would we have in hand when this study was over? What would that show us, I mean?
It'll show us the cost difference between providing market rate housing and what people can afford that actually reside in low income categories. So the difference between paying rent at market rate versus what someone could pay for, that makes a wage that's in an extremely low, a low or very low category. So understanding that piece will provide information for council to set a policy later on. But before we can come to you, so you can have that policy discussion amongst yourselves and provide direction to staff, this is a key technical piece of information that you would use to evaluate that.
And who pays for this in the final analysis?
In terms of the study itself?
Yes.
We're asking council to set aside money so we can hire a consultant to prepare the actual study. Or are you referring to who would actually pay the inclusionary housing fee?
Well, the fee, yeah.
The fee would be paid by residential developers?
Through this study.
Once we approve the new general plan and this fee goes into effect, or even if this fee went into effect before that, it will be paid by developers of residential housing in the community. And the non-commercial linkage fee, non-residential linkage fee portion of it will be paid by commercial developers as they turn properties over in the community to help, help us meet our affordable housing goals.
You know, that seems a little illogical. We're trying to lower the price of housing to the eventual buyer, and yet we're charging a fee to the developer, which he would undoubtedly add to the price of the housing.
I think, so Councilmember Jones, maybe if I can just step in briefly, you know, the council provided direction for, for, as part of our housing element, for us to move forward in bringing a inclusionary housing ordinance program forward. This study simply provides council the baseline of information to make a policy decision. They can make, council can make whatever policy decision they wish. You can go with, you know, anywhere from zero all the way up the range. So it's, this is, but you cannot make a determination without a nexus study that's market based. And that's the critical piece of this. This provides that backing to ensure that whatever is done is not arbitrary in nature. But it's the council's policy call 100%.
When we developed the property there at Erbs and Hillcrest, what will be our method of trying, I think it's the feeling right now that we want to have dwellings that can be purchased, either townhouses or condos. What will be our method of deciding exactly what direction that will go in?
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what we're, we're working on here is whether we are going to allow a study to be done on, on inclusionary housing. I think we'll, we'll talk more about Hillcrest in a little bit. I believe there's separate items.
Yeah, it's another item. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if, I think Councilmember Jones was just wondering about the cost or the fee of the study. I mean, it's $206,000, which we would be approving as part of this consent calendar if there is enough support.
Yeah, I believe, I believe our, this, our item here is whether we want to do a study to be.
That's right.
We need the study to be able to even go forward at all, so.
So I move to approve item 7F.
Is that F Frank?
Yes, F as in Frank.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We'll go on to some other items now. We have our public hearings. We have our annual report on the CDBG, and this is the COVID and fiscal year 2223 CDBG action plans. And we have a couple of people making the, the, the presentation, Lynn Oshida, and also available is Marjan Bazadi.
And Mayor, I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8A, fiscal year 2019, 20, amended CDBG CV and fiscal year 2022, 23 CDBG action plans. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has presented a speaker card. In pursuant to council standards, the speaker will have five minutes.
I'm showing two speakers on item A.
We just have one. The other one's for 10E.
Very good. I do have Rena Sepulveda?
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Rena Sepulveda.
Ms. Sepulveda, if I could please ask you to hold a second, we have to hear the, open the hearing and hear the public presentation first. Thank you.
I apologize, Ms. Sepulveda. That's my error.
No problem.
The staff could please go forward?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the city's annual public hearing on the proposed use of Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development or HUD. Also before you tonight is the 2019 substantial amendment for the coronavirus CDBG funds. The CDBG funds will be used to benefit low income Thousand Oaks residents. City staff is requesting council approval on the HUD documents. The amendment to the 2019 CDBG CV action plan and the 2022 CDBG action plan was prepared in consultation with the public and local stakeholders. And a copy of the draft documents was posted on the city's website for the public review prior to tonight's meeting. The city received a special coronavirus CDBG HUD grant of $1.1 million. The 2019 action plan describes the CDBG CV grant allocation and tracked independently from the annual CDBG funds. The purpose of the third substantial amendment is to transfer funds within existing projects in order to create new public service activities for coronavirus-related homeless services. The table shows a decreased budget in the closed economic development and decreased budget in the available administration budget, allowing for a transfer of $160,000 to public services. For the city's annual CDBG action plan, the budget is approximately $626,000. The 2019 CDBG CV amendment and the 2022 CDBG action plan were prepared with community outreach. A community needs assessment and notice of application was conducted for 60 days. The city received five CDBG CV public services, 10 CDBG public services, and five CDBG projects applications. The draft documents were posted on the city's website for 30 days. Attachments to the staff report provides a summary of the draft documents. All comments that were received during this period, in addition to comments that are heard tonight, will be included in the final action plan documents, which will be submitted to HUD. This slide shows the new CDBG CV homeless shelter activities. Both agencies have HUD experience and activities have coronavirus response as required for these special funds. This slide shows the breakdown of the regular 2022 CDBG allocations. As you can see, CDBG funds are focused on housing rehabilitation and public services. Agencies that are being recommended for CDBG funds have HUD experience and are capable of complying with HUD regulations. The Mini Mansions Apartments project will benefit 54 low-income units and involves stucco repair at Hossadenda de Felice and exterior, exterior repairs at Richmond Terrace. The Single Family Program with SAFE will benefit five low-income mobile homes with an estimated budget of $71,000. If the entitlement grant amount should differ from what is expected, city staff proposes the SAFE project be adjusted accordingly to remain within the HUD budget. This slide shows the three social service agencies and program activities that were, are being recommended for CDBG funding. These programs will benefit over 1,000 low-income Thousand Oaks residents. Action plan budget includes staff costs to ensure CDBG programs are in compliance with HUD regulations and the County of Ventura Fair Housing Program. With city council approval tonight, the city will submit to HUD the substantial amendment to the 2019 action plan for the CDBG CV funds. The County of Ventura will submit to HUD the finalized 2022 CDBG action plan and grant agreement. This concludes the slide presentation, and staff is available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Colleagues, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I see that there are, thank you for the presentation. I see that there are several organizations which requested money but did not receive any funding. And having been out with various county services and Harbor House and since the pandemic, I know that there is a need to play some of the homeless persons, the unsheltered persons. But there isn't enough money to pay for vouchers that can be given to the unsheltered. And if the, and I understand that the application process for CDBG funds is rather onerous. Are there any other funds available so that we can get money to these local services to help homeless who are eligible to get a voucher and get a motel room?
So for, before you tonight is specifically the CDBG programs that the city administers directly. There's also the County of Ventura funds that are available. And any applicant should contact the county, county's executive officer department to apply for any additional homeless funds.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Now we can go to our public speakers. Let's, let's try again. We'll call on Rena Sepulveda.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City of Thousand Oaks council members. I hope everybody can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. So my name's Rena Sepulveda, and I'm with Turning Point Foundation. And we are a mental health and housing nonprofit servicing Thousand Oaks and other cities across Ventura County with 17 different programs in 13 different locations. And we have worked with the City of Thousand Oaks in the past several years. And I want to thank everyone for their partnership. Yeah, it's just a pleasure to work with the City of Thousand Oaks. And the project that is up for consideration or for your approval this evening is Our Place Safe Haven, which is a 14-bed specialty shelter for those with mental illness and often, mental illness and co-occurring substance use disorders. And this is to mitigate COVID-19 within our shelter and also to support a lot of the efforts, the staffing efforts and that are associated with COVID-19 because it does have an impact on their workload and a financial impact. So this funding is, is much needed and we look forward to working with the City of Thousand Oaks in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Sepulveda. I believe that is our only public speaker on this item. So, Madam Clerk, do we have?
I'll move the recommended action if.
We got to close public hearing, but.
I move, we close the public hearing.
Hold on one second, Mr. Jones. Any response or any comments from our staff?
As the speaker had mentioned, the Turning Point Foundation has used previous CDBG funding in the past, and we welcome their partnership with the new funding source. Their, their organization will help serve homeless households in Thousand Oaks, residents in Thousand Oaks, so.
Very good, I see Ms. Bill de la Penya has a comment or a question?
Thank you, Mayor Engler, I do have a question. Our Place Safe Haven, where is that located?
They're located in Ventura, in the City of Ventura, but they do serve the residents in Thousand Oaks, so they will be housed in Ventura, but they are serving Thousand Oaks residents.
So when, say, our vulnerable population officers pick someone up and take them to the count, I mean to Ventura, is it, so we are, we're helping to pay with the costs to provide shelter to residents who are unsheltered in Thousand Oaks?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Very good, then we can close our public hearing. Counsel discussion. No comments, so Ms. Bill de la Penya.
I was just going to move approval of the recommendation.
I believe Mr. Jones had jumped the gun over there, so.
No, I just was moving approval of the recommended action.
Very good, we'll give, we'll give Mr. Jones the credit for that, and Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill de la Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Moving on to our item 10, and this is Department reports. We do have a report on our Hillcrest Affordable Housing update that we talked about a few months ago, and this is an update on that. We do have Mr. Gary Rogers, Deputy City Manager, for the presentation and having any, to answer any questions. So, Mr. Rogers, please go ahead. We have a slight delay, computer malfunction.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and members of the city council. In 2021, the council authorized staff to negotiate for the purchase of 384 North Erbs Road, the Hillcrest Christian School site, and an agreement was reached via a letter of intent with the property owner on June 10th of 2021. On August 31, council approved the sale and purchase agreement for the property. Due diligence was completed and escrow closed on November 10th, 2021. The site was purchased for the purpose of delivering affordable housing, and it was consistent with the council adopted top 10 priority in fiscal 2021-22. City landscaping crews cleared up the site, and a specialized consultant was sought to lead the preparation issuance and analysis of an RFP and selection of an affordable housing developer. On February 22, 2022, the council authorized the execution of a contract with RSG, and informational meetings between RSG and city staff were subsequently completed. Tonight, Tara Matthews, a principal from RSG, is here to provide a brief overview of the affordable housing environment with focus on implications of the Surplus Lands Act, options for the Hillcrest site, and recommendations regarding the pending RFP. We will be seeking confirmation of the council objectives regarding the RFP, especially the housing type. I would like to introduce Tara Matthews, who has been with RSG since 2004 and brings a comprehensive knowledge of community development, affordable housing, and economic development.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, can you hear me all right? Great. So this evening, we'll be going through the Hillcrest Affordable Housing project, and as Gary had mentioned, I'll be giving an overview of the property. We'll talk a little bit about the affordable housing climate and development conditions right now, and then hoping to end with some considerations for the RFP and potential schedules. So first, I'd like to just start off with a recap of the property description, so the site totals 3.87 acres. It was purchased for an amount of $10 million, a portion of which came from the general fund, which was the majority, 8.8 million. And then there was also a portion purchased with housing successor funds in the amount of 1.2 million, and those housing successor funds are former redevelopment agency monies. The site is zoned R3, and that zoning designation allows for 30 dwelling units per acre, which, based on the math of 30 dwelling units per acre times a 3.87-acre site, would, could potentially allow up to 116 units. Now, with that being said, all development must meet the city's development standards, and I understand from staff you all are in the process of updating some of that information now. Thus, the project will come back to city council throughout the process, so there'll be additional opportunities to provide some guidance there. I wanted to start by defining and kind of illustrating, you know, what do we mean when we say affordable housing? And what does that mean as far as income limits and the amount of money that families or individuals are making versus what income categories those fall within? So the table that you have, the chart that's up on the screen now lists the main categories that affordable housing developers will look at to figure out how to finance their projects and which populations the project will serve. And so that ranges from the extremely low-income category, which is 30% of the area median income, all the way up to the moderate income level, which is 120% of the area median income. If we just kind of take a look at the low-income category, which is the 80% AMI level, you know, that ranges from about $51,000 to $81,000 per year for a family of three within the community. And some of the occupations that generate that type of revenue here would be things such as a social worker, or a chemist, or a human resource specialist, so. I also should note that those income ranges are adjusted annually, so, you know, if you see those numbers shift, that's why they get adjusted annually. So you can't really avoid the topic when you're talking about affordable housing and affordable housing feasibility, that affordable housing generally requires gap financing, so, you know, an affordability gap is created because either the sale price or the rental price is restricted at a level that's below the market rate value. And so that inherently creates a gap in financing. So developers must secure gap financing in order to make their projects financially feasible. The majority of those financing sources come from the state.
Majority of the funds come from what, did you say?
They come from the state of California, generally.
Thank you.
So before we jump into the RFP considerations, I need to make you all aware of that there are some legislative requirements surrounding the city's disposition of the property. The largest one is the Surplus Land Act, and so basically, it's required by the state that, prior to any city disposing of or utilizing a property, that they either declare that property as surplused or exempt surplus, and that has to be done prior to issuing an RFP. In this case, we're suggesting that the city consider a target exemption requirement to allow, or excuse me, to adopt a resolution that would declare the property exempt from surplus land, and this allows the city to have the most flexibility and control over the site development. So the target exemption that we're hoping to seek in disposition of the property would allow for 100% of the property to be used for affordable housing, restricted at the moderate income level or below, so back to the previous slide up to that 120% AMI category. And of that, 75% on the lower or low-income, 80% AMI designation and below. So this is a requirement by law, but it is the exemption within the law that would provide the most flexibility and the most control to the community on for what is developed on the site. Preference can be given to any development proposal received, so by going through this process, and we solicit development responses, you'll be able to evaluate all of them and then, you know, decide which one you would like to pick. The other legislative requirement is, as I mentioned, a small portion or a small amount of the property was purchased with housing successor funds, and there are some housing successor requirements that will also be detailed in the RFP so that the developer proposing on the project is aware that both of the funding sources were used. So, as I previously mentioned, affordable housing requires gap financing in order to be financially feasible, and a couple of things to consider as we put out an RFP and a request for proposals for development responses is that there's been a lot of changing market conditions lately and financing factors that are making it even more challenging for affordable housing developers to execute projects and secure financing. Some of those factors include construction cost are rising a lot. We're currently working on one for-sale product in a community where that has increased by 27%, and now they're trying to seek additional gap financing to help close that, and then on a rental project, it came back at a 37% increase. So things are shifting on, you know, inflation, we keep, is no new news to any of us now, but it's affecting the affordable housing market significantly. There's also rising interest rates, so as I mentioned, developers need to secure gap financing. There's no necessarily free money, that all comes and has interest on them, and so those rates are also increasing, which is increasing the cost to develop. And then, as always, you know, there's various funding availability, some funding sources are always available, some come in cycles and rounds that affordable housing developers need to seek in order to close those funding gaps on their projects. So, you know, I think the main consideration for the council to keep in mind is to issue an RFP that allows for the maximum flexibility and the most amount of respondents and responses from the development community. And that way, you'll be able to select a developer that can demonstrate their experience securing different financing sources and the ability to complete those projects. So tonight, we're hoping to seek council's approval to issue an RFP that solicits both a for-sale product and a rental product with a preference for the for-sale product. And again, this is allows the developers to go out and to figure out what is most financially feasible on the property that they can secure gap financing sources for. There are significantly more gap financing sources for affordable housing than there are for for-sale product, not to say that neither could be developed on the site, but I just caution that if you narrow it down too much in the RFP process, you potentially could run into issues with the developers either being able to secure financing or figuring out a mix that would allow the project to be financially feasible. The other thing that is good about kind of keeping it broad is that you'll get more respondents, and then you'll be able to evaluate those, and if there's something that you like in one proposal, but you, you know, you like the experience and the overall, you know, proposal by another developer, you can then say, hey, like, would you mind making this change, or you can negotiate other considerations into your agreement. And then we'll be curious tonight also to hear from you all if there's any, just any other considerations that you would like for us and staff to take and include in part of the RFP. And then our last slide is just a little bit about the proposed timeline for the selection of the developer. So the first thing that must occur is that the council via a resolution would adopt the, a resolution declaring the property exempt from the Surplus Land Act. That resolution is adopted and then is sent to the state, and then, and that would happen in next month, in May, or happening next week, it seems like so far away. And then subsequently in June, we would release the request for proposals, so we would detail out, you know, what the information on the site, the zoning, the affordability requirements, request that they give us information on their, the financial feasibility, what are they proposing, their capacity and their experience. And then we would ask that their responses and proposals be due back to us in August of 2022, and then it would take about six to eight weeks, depending on the number of responses that we get, to review all of those and to, you know, distill it down and summarize it into a fashion that we could bring back to council. And then we would come back to council in October of 2022 with the developer recommendations, you know, highlighting the different proposals, strengths and weaknesses and such. And then hopefully, at that meeting, we would be able to get guidance from the council on which developer to select, and then in late 2022, an agreement would be negotiated, and then hopefully with a final agreement to develop the site in early to mid 2023. And that timeline information will also be included in the RFP so that the developers responding are aware of the project timing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Council members, questions? Ms. Bill de la Penya?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Good evening, Ms. Matthews, thank you very much for this presentation. I have a couple of questions. The, could one of the applicants for the RFP be a, what do you call it, an entity that's part of a land trust?
The property itself isn't, isn't a land trust property, but if they wanted to propose a project and include it, and that is something that they could propose and we could consider, it's not something that in the RFP is something we would eliminate or not allow.
Okay, and would the applicants, I would imagine if it's a nonprofit organization, they would be paying prevailing wage?
Not necessarily, so prevailing wage is triggered by the funding source. So typically what triggers prevailing wage in the most affordable housing projects is the wanting project-based vouchers to help subsidize the operating expenses. There's some projects that we see come through that are kind of below that threshold and do not trigger prevailing wage, so I guess the answer is yes and no, depending on what the developer is proposing. So I guess the answer is yes and no, depending on what the developer is proposing.
And there are developers of low-income housing that are building all-electric. And that is something that I would like to include in the direction being given tonight. How familiar are you with those projects?
So typically, if we could include that in the RFP, we're not planners or approvers of the actual design of the project, but typically the developers, if there's a preference for that, will put that in the RFP so they know to design it that way. And then they, like I said, the projects still go through all of the city approvals for like any development project, so you can negotiate that along the way.
All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
If you want to ask my opinion on something, ask council member builder opinion. I take the opposite side usually. Regarding all-electric, I'm one that leaves it up to the free market. So in that proposal, if they could split it out to both sections, one for all-electric to accommodate, my esteemed colleague, council member Dale de La Peña, and myself for gas, electric, whatever the builder wants to do for market demand. So if we can split that out, that would be excellent. So that way, both of us are accommodated. Thank you.
Very good. I think, I think a broad approach on any type of bidding in RFP is probably a good approach to take. I have noticed, as most of my colleagues have noticed, that the price of doing business is going up. And so there's some type of urgency perhaps through our deliberations on this. Is there also urgency from the state side with their funding? I know right now there's quite a bit of urgency with the state to help provide some both funding for those experiencing homelessness and also for affordable housing. Is that a factor in putting out an RFP?
So the timing of the RFP actually lines up really well with some of the state like tax credit programs and such. And I think to answer your question, it really varies again on what the developer is proposing and then which funding sources they seek, because each funding source kind of comes with its own, I guess, set of rules and regulations of who it can help. And so we'll start to see that. And we also ask them for their proposed timeline of getting their other financing sources to kind of get to the question of how that's all going to line up. The state is in the process of what they're calling a supernova for three of the affordable housing funding sources that will be issued here soon. But the thought is that that will be issued twice a year. So the state is constantly making adjustments to the availability of funds and when those funds are available. But the developers are pretty up to date with that. And then when they give us those development responses, they detail out which ones they're seeking, you know, when they think they'll be able to receive.
Very good. And when you come to us with, after we hopefully approve going forward, that in September, October next year, you'll have the RFPs analyzed and be able to determine, help us to determine perhaps the best mix of funding and whatnot that each of these folks have.
Yes. And when we review the proposals, we also like to poke holes at their proposals and assumptions as well. So we do that a little bit upfront as well. We review a lot of these. So, you know, if some of the assumptions are off or, you know, we have information, we'll ask follow-up questions to them just to make sure that before we bring it to you, you know, obviously as time goes on, the projects will change and the financing mixes and the cost will change, but that, you know, the general assumptions, you know, align with all the market conditions as well as what their potential unit mixes are and such. So we do all the vetting and then, you know, present it back to you.
And part of the vetting, is that also based on the type of product that some of the builders produce? In other words, there's builders that produce very high-end stuff and very low-end stuff. How do you figure that into your RFP?
So generally, we're not looking at all of the design standards in this portion of the, of the engagement. So the proposals come back with the general concept of what that is. But as I mentioned, you'll be going through a negotiation with them and agreement prep with them. And then that's when some of that stuff can get ironed out. But typically, I can tell you there isn't high-end finishes in most affordable housing projects. I mean, you know, it's nice, but generally, you know, they have to come back with a proposal and a financial project pro forma that they can get to pencil and fill that gap. But we do look and say, wow, your development costs are really high or yours are really low, you know, please give us more information on that. So we do, you know, poke some holes around that, but we're not looking at, you know, specific countertops or.
No, I understand if it's, you know, Formica or granite, we don't get to that level of granularity, but just there's some, there's some developers that may have a better reputation than others. And I'm just wondering if the RFP can help identify those.
Yeah, we ask them a lot of information about like number of projects, you know, where their ability to secure gap financing. We also ask them about their financial solvency and health of their organization. So we do a pretty thorough vetting.
Mr. Mayor.
Go, one second, Mr. Jones. Mr. Powers had a comment.
I just wanted to offer for the council as you're going through the question phase right now and you're beginning to think about it, you know, there's a wide berth of things to talk about and just to help our consultant team and staff team think about packaging things potentially in preferences category. And that's preferences like for-sale and that type of thing. And then perhaps options that you would be interested in seeing considered. And you got options and you have options such as all-electric, if you want, you know, community rec room, you know, those types of things. So think about categorizing those as you're going through this discussion, because I want to make sure there's clarity, because at the end of the day, you know, I know there's differing opinions, everybody has perspectives, and I want to make sure when the RFP is issued, it represents the concurrence of the council. And because that RFP is going to hit the market and there's no redos. And, you know, the market's going to be responding to that in a manner that we can't really go back on. And so I just want to make that point. And City Attorney probably echoes those thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I believe Mr. Jones had a comment or a question?
You know, we bought this land with the idea of producing affordable housing. Now, we own the land and whomever is the winner of this RFP, the fact that they don't have to buy the land should make a significant difference, I would think, in the price to the eventual either owner or renter. I wondered if, Mr. City Manager, do you know, have any idea of what percentage that we could lower either the rent or the price if these turn out to be townhouses or condos that could be sold?
Well, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Matthews for more detail, but I, you know, certainly the land is a key factor, right? And I'm sure that land has significantly increased in value just since last August based on market conditions. But that's not the entire picture. I mean, there's a lot of variables that are going to come into play.
No, but I mean, we have, it's more likely we could produce affordable housing if we donate the land than if somebody had to go out and buy that land.
Correct. That's the full intent.
Do we have any idea just how much that would lower the eventual price?
Go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, so it depends on what project is, what the developers are proposing, the number of units, the depth of affordability. So when I say depth of affordability, I mean what income categories are being restricted to. As I mentioned, that really affects the ability of the revenue generation side. The property being contributed does significantly help that. However, you know, we're seeing that it's taking multiple, multiple funding layers to get affordable housing projects completed. I have not recently seen a deal that's had less than four. And so even with.
Less than four what?
Different funding sources that they're using to fund the project. So yes, the property would definitely help with that. And as when they do their evaluation and analysis, you know, they can let us know whether or not that contribution closes that full gap for them or what portion that it does.
Well, you know, it's always been my preference that we would let first-time home buyers have a chance to buy a condo or townhouse and, you know, get a stake in real estate that hopefully, you know, they could rise with their value that they accumulate and then go on maybe to something better. Is it more likely that we would get people to respond to the RFP with that would want to build apartments rather than a units for sale?
I, potentially, I mean, there's just, in general, there are more affordable housing developers for rental projects than there are for sale just in general. But I think by leaving it open to both, you might get some that are either 100% one or the other, and you may get some developers that will propose a mix. So there's no, you know, yes or no to that. I think it's really dependent on, you know, how we market this. And we have lists and access to both nonprofit and for-profit affordable housing developers that develop both for-sale and rental products. And so the idea is that it would be open to everybody and you'll, should receive responses on both.
If you had a mix, have you dealt with a project before that had a mix of rental and for-sale units?
Yes, and they usually kind of carve it out in a couple of different phases, but we have seen that before.
Do you have any idea how many units this land would produce?
So based on the zoning, as it currently stands, it's 30 dwelling units per acre, which would be up to 116 units.
We have, given a greater density than that on occasions, I believe if affordable housing was part of a normal development, I don't know if that would be a wise thing for that particular property. But you know, just a reaction that I have to all this, we're trying to do this in a market where the prices are going up, 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 and we're like running against the tide here. We're trying to produce something. We bought the corner for $10 million and we want to do the best we can with this. And I noticed that on your table, I, you know, some of those occupations you had for their, you know, low, medium and so forth incomes, I don't know if that even jives right now with the present situation, because we're seeing in this market, we're seeing it is a market in which people that own businesses have or are having to pay more for wages at this time. And, you know, I, what I would certainly like to see is since we went into this with the idea of paying the $10 million to buy the corner, you know, and then be able to produce something that like young professionals or people in different categories of income could, you know, purchase or rent. And I, you know, I think we're still on the right track, but it's becoming, in my mind, a little more difficult than I thought it, it might be at the outset, so.
Mr. Jones, I'm going to go, I'm going to hold on everybody to our three-question rule. But I think you're on the right track that we, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be more difficult to do what we want to do, but I believe that's why we're here. Mr.
Yeah, that completed my questioning.
Thank you. Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for City Manager, Mr. Powers. So what I understand, our task here is to look at all the options for this property on Hillcrest and Herbs, to get direction from council, and this is sort of an industry, they refer to it as blue sky, options, choices to look at, and all the different possibilities we could do, whether it be one type of housing or whatever. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah. So this is a unique set of circumstances, Councilman McNamee. There's not often that cities have an opportunity to have a blank piece of property and to put it out to the marketplace. Now, there's some constraints around that, obviously, based on what you heard, state law and otherwise. But as we move forward with an RFP process here, what we're seeking is consensus of the council in terms of what guidance are we providing to the marketplace? And so that's really what we're here tonight to do, because the RFP, based on the timeline, will be going out on the streets next month.
My suggestion, Mayor, is perhaps we can hear from some of the public comments on this and then come back and discuss a little bit more. Is that a possibility?
There will definitely be some public comments.
And we can come back and discuss after the public comments a little bit more?
Well, we have still left some questions, I think, from council, so that's our normal.
Just down the road. Thank you.
We'll have plenty of time to talk. Any other questions from my colleagues of staff? Very good. Well, let me open it up to public comments then. Madam Clerk? Very good. We do have a speaker, a couple of speakers on this topic. First up is Mr. Frank Shiloh. Mr. Shiloh. You will have three minutes, sir.
Good evening. Frank Shiloh, 51-year resident of Thousand Oaks. The, I want to, for Mr. Mayor and the council members and Mr. Powers, I want to thank you for all you're doing to keep Thousand Oaks the number one city in the state of California. Really appreciate all your effort. One of the things I, while I was preparing to come here, I looked at the situation and I thought, wow, we have two of the biggest unmet needs coming together tonight and they could be addressed at this site, this present site on, on Hillcrest. That was the one, number one is the need for affordable housing. And number two is the homelessness, which you decided was the biggest unmet need in the community. So I walked the property to see what was out there. And of course, I couldn't get into the building. And I subsequently found out that there's, the building has been cleared out. But that doesn't change my, what I'm going to propose, that it was used as a hospital. And as a hospital, it had a nursing station or a staff station, and it had single rooms and it had a kitchen. And to me, that sounded like a possible homeless facility, because it's going to be kind of difficult to convert that into single-family homes. And, but I wanted to, to ask you to give directions to the consultant to assess the possibilities of a homeless facility on the site. And second, to urge the consultant to contact Jennifer Turnkey, who is a director of a continuum of care at Ventura County. And she has been working in the western portion of Ventura County cities to develop homeless housing. And she has found ways, and she has extensive, extensive experience in providing site security, which reduces any problems with the surrounding community. And there have been no incidents in the other end of the county of problems of homeless people wandering through the neighborhood where the homeless people is set, because they have a specific way in which they have the time during the day and the night that there's always constantly someone there. During the day, it's mostly case management and at night it's security. So I hope that you will ask the consultant to consider those possibilities to include the homeless facility there with the security.
Thank you, sir.
Good timing.
I would say perfect timing. Next up, we have Larry Persons. Mr. Persons. Three minutes, sir.
Mayor, city council members. Larry Persons, I'm the board chair of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA. I reside. I reside in Westlake Village, but we serve the entire area. I saw that you were considering uses for the Hillcrest site, and as a builder of over 10,000 affordable units, I, I applaud your efforts to develop affordable housing. I was asked if it would be a good site for a new Y in the Thousand Oaks area, as combined uses could be complementary. Initially, I thought the site was larger than it actually is, and I've come to learn that it's a little under four acres. Unfortunately, that's the size that we would need for a full facility and parking. So while my idea was going to be possible joint uses of types of things, I'm not sure that that would be feasible. So ultimately, I guess I would be proposing an alternative idea for your consideration, and I'm not sure that that meets with your current goals, but I thought I'd at least address that as a possibility for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Very good. I think that's our last public speaker.
Mayor, Mayor, I got a question on last speaker.
A question for last speaker?
Yeah, I'm not clear.
Please, Mr. Persons, come back down.
Yes. You are head of the Southeast YMCA. What, what was the other alternative for the site that you're asking? I'm not clear.
My initial thought was to do a joint use of affordable housing and a YMCA facility, but I don't believe that it's large enough to accomplish both of those goals. I think it's kind of an either-or kind of a situation.
So you're looking to change the direction of the council and see if we can put a YMCA site there instead of affordable housing?
Well, I'm not so bold as to propose that.
I am.
Or presume it. I guess what I'm doing is suggesting an idea for your consideration and let you mull with that, or whatever you chose to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's our last public speaker. So then I think we're down to responses from our staff and further questions of staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As for the first speaker, the good news is we're doing a lot in the community to deal with homelessness, and we have a major project underway and, or at least being considered by the state of California. So the idea of transforming this current facility into something we could use would also be quite challenging, as it is quite old. Bringing it up to code and standards for a homeless facility would be extremely challenging and difficult, let alone all the other considerations associated with citing something of that nature there. As for the, the second speaker, we do think that it would in fact very likely be challenging to, to meet the needs of both a traditional YMCA, if you will, or at least what we believe to be a more traditional YMCA and affordable housing. And given that this is the council's top priority to develop, and the reason we purchased this property was affordable housing, you know, we, we certainly leave it to the council. We may have, maybe I'll stop there and if the, let the council, if they wish, speak, speak further to that.
Let me have Mr. Adams go first.
Are we now officially in our discussion period?
I think we're now going to be in our discussion without our questions answered, so let's do our discussion.
Okay. Because I notice our question period tends to blend over into our discussion period, but we're now in the discussion period.
We are officially in our discussion period.
Thank you very much, Mayor. All right, anyway. I think we need to remember why we bought this property in the first place, and I think we were all here at the time, and the, the primary discussion was for housing. And I know, I'm quite sure that most of us on this dais, as well as most of the people in Thousand Oaks, has built their wealth over time through home ownership. And I'd like to see that opportunity for other people. I think that's important, to get a foothold in the community, and homeownership can do you that, do that for you and build wealth over time. So, and I also think this is an ideal location for housing, absolutely ideal. It's right in the heart of the city, it's walkable, people can avail themselves of the different services around the area, so I think that that is a big plus for the property. And I certainly understand the flexibility that you are stating that we'll need. And we should get as many RFPs as possible, I think. And if we, if we restrict it too much, that could bring our RFP count down and not give us the opportunities that we're looking for. So I get what you're saying about, you know, a blend, but when we're talking about preferences, I agree with Mr. Jones. My, my preference would be for house for, houses for sale, houses for sale. So if that's going to be one of the things that we could list as a preference, I would certainly be in favor of that. And as far as the electric business, I, I could see listing that as a preference, not, not necessarily as a requirement, but as a preference. Would that be amenable to you, councilmember? No, I think I might be leading up to that, but, well, anyway, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but, yeah, I just think this is an incredible opportunity for workforce housing, which we are deficient here in the city, for our police officers, for our teachers, for our firefighters. I mean, this is something that they could really take advantage of. It's a very small site, it's smaller than I thought, it's only 3-point acre, 3.8 acres. So as the gentleman mentioned, and I was on the YMCA board for 20 years, and I, I respect what the Y does for the community, but you'd need this much just to put the Y in. So I would have to say that that's probably not going to be tenable for this particular site. And as far as a homeless shelter, you know, Frank, you, we really need to work on that. I'm not sure it'd be right for this particular site, but as you probably know, we're working on the quality end and different initiatives there to create shelter for homeless people. But on this particular site with the small size, I think that, for, for me, anyway, my, my preference would be to see for-sale housing with a flexible approach to the RFP process, and, and, and I, and as we've discussed, the economic situation's changing in, in the nation. Interest rates are up, construction costs are up, inflation's up, so there's challenges here, so we need to be as flexible as possible to get something done there. So, yeah, I guess I could make a motion since I'm at it. You want me to make a motion?
Do we have a, can we conclude discussion before we make a motion?
Well, let's discuss more.
Well, we can, we can actually go either way with that, but I think we can have more discussion. Next up, I think, was Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. I look at the neighborhood surrounding Hillcrest, Herbs Road, and I see on Avenue de los Arboles, no, it's not Avenue de los Arboles, it's called Los Feliz, a lot of Section 8 housing, low-income housing with families, with children. Within an eighth of a mile of that property site, we have three schools, Hillcrest Christian School, Colina Middle School, Ascension Lutheran Elementary School. We have the Boys and Girls Club just down the street at Colina Middle School. Herbs Road have apartments up and down with children there. North of that area, we have homes with children. And when I look at the need in that community, and that we have closed down the YMCA at the end of Moore Park in Sunset Hills, the YMCA provides a valuable service to a certain population in our community. And that would be, to me, an excellent location. And my preference would be YMCA with the low-income housing sharing the spot. Now, whether or not that can be worked out is another story, and that's for something for exploration. However, I see the community benefit coming from the YMCA being there with low-income housing being tremendous. Over the summer, the YMCA provides tutoring for children to get their skills up, make them successful in life, teaching them how to read, arithmetic, history, music. They have a place for, a safe place to go after school, so that way they're not latch key children getting into trouble. And I see that as a wonderful synergy occurring between low-income housing and the benefits of having a YMCA at that location, whether it be exclusive YMCA on that site or a shared site, that will be determined. But to maintain maximum flexibility and highest and best use of that property, I think this council should consider moving in that direction of at least exploring in their RFP that as an option, either YMCA exclusive or combined YMCA with low-income housing, so that way we accomplish our goals, but also provide a greater and higher use, best use for that property to service the community. Regarding the option by the legend in our community, the former council member and Mayor Frank Shillo, he's made it a passion to try and address homeless housing here in the city. And I applaud a man who has dedicated many years of his life to the service of the city, and even now volunteers his time to address homelessness. Every day in my office, when I look out on Moore Park Road where Lutheran Social Services is located, I see the misery of the homeless living out there in the elements, just on survival mode. For most of us, we go home to our very safe homes, go to our office buildings, don't see them. I talk to them, I know them on a first-name basis. I'm actively, like Frank, looking for a solution here to the homeless issue, not only in Thousand Oaks, but Ventura County, and I welcome my fellow councilmember's effort to do the same. There is an answer here, but we've got to find it. So the homeless housing as a possibility for this, I think should also be explored as an option for us, as a blue-sky kind of possibility. It may not fly in the community, may not be the right site, may not pencil out, but Ms. Matthews, I think you said, this is the time in which we want to put it out there, and City Manager Drew Powers, you said, this is now the time to do it, because you can't do a do-over. So if we're going to look at the YMCA either exclusive or combined site, we need to put it in there. If we want to look at it as a homeless shelter, we need to put it in there. If we want it for rental, for low-income only, or sale, or combination thereof, put it in there and see what comes back from the marketplace. And then we, as a council, at least have information there to make a final decision. Be flexible, I heard said earlier, I think it was our mayor. Keep it broad. Don't try to nail it, nail it down too far. But that's the direction I would go and recommend with this, because I see tremendous benefit from ideas that have been brought forward by former Councilman Shillo, Chair of YMCA, Larry Persons, as well as what we've talked about here with the direction and mission. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Is there any way I can notify you I want to speak besides, besides saying, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor works. I can sometimes see you over there.
There's no button here, or no...
Either that or stand up and wave. I'll see you.
You know, no, you've been very good at calling on me, I appreciate it. You know, I, my fellow councilmember here that just spoke, I, there are so many things you said that I agree with, but I have to go back to the fact, and I notice what we're asked to do tonight is not to issue the RFP, but to provide information, which we're all doing, to form, you know, as a basis to form the RFP. We bought this land for housing, and I appreciate the comments of the YMCA Director and Frank But I think we should go forward with the idea of producing as affordable a housing as we can. As I say, we're swimming against the tide. The tide of housing and the prices of rentals and purchase are going up, up, up all the time, so I think we ought to act quickly if that trend is going to continue. And I would simply like to agree wholeheartedly with what Councilman Adam said. I think we ought to go forward with a plan, try to get homeownership if we can. If we can't, maybe a blend to be attractive to developers of homeownership and some rentals. But we can't take care of all the needs on this 3.8 acres. And I think we should look at other sites for some of these other very worthwhile suggestions that we've had. But I would, as I say, I would second the comments of Mr. Adam.
Very good. Ms. Builda Le Penya.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I do have questions, actually, and my question is regarding the affordability in perpetuity. Is that something that can be required, can be a preference, because we want to make sure that these are not going to expire after 50 years? There will always be a need for housing and affordable housing.
So the quickest answer to affordable in perpetuity is a land trust model. That's the purpose of a land trust. However, I do have to say that affordable housers are in the business, and developers are in the business of affordable housing, so there is a lot of projects, even right now, that previously that the 55-year restriction was 30 years, and they're coming to that end where they're refinancing, rehabbing, and re-restricting those units for another 55-year term. And so a lot of that can be detailed and about where the potential property and unit reverts to at the end of the period, so it's, it's something that can be negotiated to allow at least those options for those discussions in the affordable housing agreement, even with the 55-year term.
Thank you. Now, we in Thousand Oaks recently lost apartments due to the expiration date. Not sure whom I can ask in terms of staff about how many units came offline, and so that is why I was hoping we could put something in this proposal that would maybe ask that there will be a refinancing after a certain number of years or extended beyond, instead of 55 years, maybe we can do it 60 years, 70 years, maybe not in perpetuity, but put a timetable on it, because this is, after all, taxpayer property, and we're doing it for a very essential public benefit that we don't want to lose, at least I don't want to lose. And so I'm just wondering if maybe there is some feedback from, from staff regarding that.
Well, I think, as Tara said, that's certainly something that we can have as a negotiable component of the contract. You looked like you had something else to add?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, I would just kind of caution before we put that in the RFP of having that discussion with developers, because there's some financing sources, other lenders that aren't the city, that also have requirements about the term of affordability as well. And so since these projects were not the only player in the game, we just need to be mindful that there's going to be other lenders to the developer, and they're going to have requirements. And so, you know, yes, you can negotiate that along the way, but I wouldn't want to put that in the RFP, and then we would be narrowing down potentially responses or feasibility.
And I think what I might add to that is this certainly won't be the last time, as this moves forward, that it ends up in front of this body. And so there'll be a development agreement or some form of that associated, and so there's going to have to be further discussions around those components, giving the City Council an opportunity to negotiate with one specific developer when we understand their exact performant financial model, to ensure that the council's goal of seeing this protected for the long term.
The one thing I'd also add is that, again, a for-sale project is incredibly different than a rental project, because, again, we enter, if it's a rental project, then you're right, we have an agreement with the developer. If it's for sale, remember, individuals are going to be purchasing these houses using most likely private financing, so whether or not banks would even authorize financing beyond a standard covenant that would restrict, that would impose a deed restriction beyond a typical 55-year period, I've never heard of that. I don't know, Tara, if you've heard of that or not, but what happens in private for, in for-sale housing?
In the for-sale model.
I'm not sure that you could even extend beyond that.
Yeah, so for the for-sale, so the term thereby law is actually 45 years, so it's a lesser of a covenant period required by law, and it is, you know, challenging to extend it past that period. The other thing to kind of keep in mind with a for-sale product, and we do compliance monitoring as well, so after, our firm does that, so after projects are developed, we follow up basically to make sure that the residents are either paying the correct rent or being charged rent amount, and then on for-sale, we ensure that those homeowners are still living there and then basically negotiating equity sharing and whatnot. And a lot of times, if those aren't being monitored or recorded, we lose units just because they lived there for 10 years, they forgot there was a covenant, and then they sold it, and title didn't pop up until the city about it. So there's a lot of different factors. A lot of it comes down to the, the agreements that are drafted and the language included, and so there'll be opportunities later on for us to discuss that specific. And so there'll be opportunities later on for us to discuss that specific language.
So with my last question, we would be able to also attract proposals from land trusts?
There is nothing that would prohibit them from...
Okay. Because, again, this is taxpayer property, $10 million, going to be worth a lot more 50 years from now. And so I just wanted to make sure that it will retain a public benefit. And I would agree, I would agree that we need to have the proposal as broad as possible, only because I'm looking at the chart here for the income qualifications. And a hostess or coffee shop employee cook making less than $30,000 a year may not necessarily be able to buy his or her first condo or home. So, you know, it does make sense to look at other options as well if we want to be, if we want to address extremely low income as well. And again, to dispel the notion that low income is negative in our community, it is not. A very low income is up to $50,000 a year, family of four, I believe. That is your EMT, your paramedic, your pharmacy worker, pharmacy technician, childcare worker, teaching assistant, dental technician. That is what we're talking about. That is the workforce. That is exactly whom we need to be able to retain. And so I just wanted to mention this only because it is, there is this negative connotation associated with very low income or low income, and it shouldn't be. And with that, I would like to move ahead and go ahead and make a motion that we incorporate the, in this request for proposals, a broader scope with electricity as a preference, and if that is amenable to my colleagues, so that the applicants know for what to bid. Not saying it will be a requirement, but certainly a preference, and I will continue to push for that, because that is really the way of the future. That is what we must do in order to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and the rate of asthma in children.
Would you, Claudia, would you consider adding for-sale?
Yes.
As a preference as well?
For-sale as a preference, sure.
Good, very good. We do have some more comments down here by Councilmember Mackamy.
Thank you, Mayor. My council members are always very quick to move a motion and without further discussion. So, thank you, Mayor. My colleague, Councilmember Jones, comments are very appropriate in that, yes, costs of construction are going up, and we need to make some decisions. We've got a timeline, Ms. Matthews, as you outlined. So it's not as though it's going to change. We've got our timeline, and we'll see where the economy moves. But Ms. Matthews' question is that is it possible that we work down, again, the three tracks, because we want to keep this broad and open, whether it be rental, for-sale, or combination thereof. And I'm suggesting that we also still work up the possibility of YMCA either taking over the whole property or a portion of it by you working with the RFP accordingly. And the fourth one is, with a homeless shelter, whether or not that works out is a different story, but that still, could still be worked up for council to come back and take a look. And yes, council members, it's a pivot. This is blue sky. This is looking at possibilities here. And I think YMCA is a strong possibility to benefit the community. I think homeless shelter is something worth looking at. Whether we move down those two avenues, I don't know. Whether it be housing that is purchased or rented, those need to be looked at. Whether it be electric, gas, electric and gas, again, keep it broad. To say we have a preference for one or the other, I think, is already sending a message and may deter certain bids. So my thought is just to leave it broad, see what comes back, and include both YMCA and homeless shelter as a possibility in here. Would there be any issue with working up the RFP to work down those three or four lanes as we move forward with bids?
So I'm going to first address the homeless shelter. So a portion of the funds used to acquire the site are housing successor funds, and there's limitations there. I have to go back into your most recent reporting to take a look at that on the amount of funds that can be used for homeless purposes. We would have to take a look at that. It could potentially complicate matters a little bit. The other thing that I would offer is some of the state financing sources. While they may not be a shelter, there is a lot of funds out there for permanent supportive housing. And the concept of permanent supportive housing is also for that extremely low 30% AMI and below, and sometimes that type of housing development addresses some of the homeless population as well. Another funding source is for veterans. It's the VHHP program. Again, it's targeting some of those lower income categories and addresses the homeless population there, but it is not a shelter. Shelters are financed a little differently. Typically, you know, there's more funding from a community to do that. And then those units, you know, a lot of times, the idea is that you'll transition out of the shelter into permanent supportive housing. So I'm just kind of presenting those options that, you know, perhaps if we're not including the exact homeless shelter, I have a pretty strong feeling that you're going to get some responses back that will include some component that will help that extremely low-income category, which also would help some homeless individuals or those that may be transitioning out of shelters into a stable home environment.
And the YMCA, as we work down that avenue as well in the RFP, including all the things that we've discussed here at council?
Yeah, so I haven't seen it exactly with the YMCA, so I'm not saying it's impossible. But we have seen in other jurisdictions where the Boys and Girls Club, you know, partnered with the developer and just did a small portion of the common area or community benefits that had an area where they could come and run programs. I do think it potentially could be challenging, just from hearing from the gentleman from the YMCA, about the size of the site, to be able to accommodate both in full capacity. And then, you know, another thing to keep in mind is RENA requirements, so your affordable housing requirements, and trying to maximize the number of units, affordable housing units that can be built, so that you can meet some of those targets. The state is continually increasing their enforcement of that. I was just recently at a conference in Sacramento where HCD was there and talking about their Accountability Enforcement Group, and they're really trying to hold jurisdictions to meeting those requirements. So, you know, I think a consideration there for you all is just, you know, are you trying to maximize the number of affordable housing units to meet those RENA requirements?
Thank you. One of the greatest challenges I have as a council member is dealing with the imposition of Sacramento upon the city's, Thousand Oaks included, with the regional housing needs assessment. And many of the creative things we'd like to do here in the city oftentimes ties our hands because of Sacramento. So I appreciate that. So, again, to bottom-line this, is it possible to work up the site for either YMCA, homeless shelter, and/or housing for low and very low income, whatever the case may be, for sale and/or rent?
You know, my belief is that it would be rather challenging to accommodate all of those uses on the site.
Now, I'm not looking for all the uses simultaneously, but to work up one track as YMCA, one track as homeless, one track as housing for low, very low income, either for sale or for rent. Those are the three tracks that we're talking about to send it out for the RFP.
If I could jump in, we do have a question also from Ms. Bill de la Peña. You, I think what she's saying is that we have, we can do those tracks if we so desire.
Okay. So we can, Ms. Matthews, again, I'm just trying to get clarification. We can do those three tracks if we want to, is that correct?
So based on some of the legislative requirements, it's going to be challenging to do that. So if you're going to issue it for just a homeless site, right, because of the Surplus Land Act and what is required there, it would be challenging to meet all the legal requirements there. And similarly, for the YMCA to have that exclusively, disposition of city land these days with the Surplus Land Act, it has to go to affordable housing developers at first chance, and you have a harder time negotiating out of that. You know, it's usually better when a developer comes in with that partnership already and proposes it into the project.
If I could just jump in, excuse me, if, so it's possible to do these things, however it'd be very difficult, is that what I'm hearing? Very good.
We don't hire you to do easy. We hire you to do difficult, that's my point.
I just want to make sure that council understands. So when the ad hoc committee came and recommended acquisition of the property, the clear direction to staff was for affordable housing, hence the reason why we hired Ms. Matthews for an affordable housing project. If the desire of the council is to consider something other than affordable housing that impacts the surplus exemption finding that will be taken to the council in May, in order for us to even put out an RFP, we either have to declare it to be surplus, and then affordable housing providers have an option to bid on it, or we declare it to be exempt surplus, and then we have more control over the type of the project that goes on there. But if we're declaring it exempt, it's because we have agreed, in other words, we, you guys have agreed to do an affordable housing project. If the desire is to do an RFP for a YMCA, or the desire is to do a homeless shelter, that exemption no longer applies. So that would be problematic, because it's a resolution that we have to send to HCD up to the state for their review and consideration. The second, there's one more legal option also, in addition, is to the use of the housing successor funds that we use to purchase the property. There are restrictions on what we can do with that property. So you have the Surplus Lands Act and the Housing Successor Agency fund requirements that would impact doing anything other than affordable housing project. So, yes, we want flexibility, but I think the idea that staff was presenting was flexibility on an affordable housing project, not on other types of projects. But if council's direction is to consider other types of projects, you can certainly do that, but then that kind of changes the game on what the next steps are.
So, again, I'm hearing that it's possible, but very difficult to change at this point to any type of commercial, which is basically a YMCA, if we wanted to do that. It'd be very, very difficult.
If the direction to staff is to also, to do both an RFP for an affordable housing project and also a standalone YMCA project, that would be problematic with even submitting a surplus resolution to the state.
Ms. Bill de la Peña.
In order to address the issue of the, or the point of the Y, I mean, the YMCA currently does have property already in Thousand Oaks. If that is something that they could work with, certainly it is available. And, I mean, that could be an option, but I don't see the Y as an option here with, this is not what we had set out to do, and therefore I would just refer to my motion that would then also lead to the exempt surplus declaration. Is that what I need to include in the motion as well?
Well, we would be bringing the resolution back again. Again, it's a total policy call what council wants. If council wants us to look at other things other than affordable housing, you know, tonight is the night to give us that direction, for sure. Just understand that there will be delays because we have to come back with additional information for you all.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. Adam had a comment first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I will point out, and the gentleman from the Y, I'm sure, is very proud of this facility, but there is a full-service YMCA with ball fields and swimming, multimillion-dollar facility that's probably five, maybe two miles from the site that we're talking about?
Five.
Approximately?
Five.
Five, okay. So within easy distance. That's number one. And number two, as far, I like what you mentioned about permanent supportive housing versus a shelter. We are working on that, permanent supportive housing, with the quality, and that has been purchased, and we have 79 units that we will more than likely be dedicated to permanent supportive housing for the homeless. So I just, yeah, I appreciate what you're saying about these endeavors and their great community benefits, but we're talking about a small site here, and I just, I wouldn't want to dilute the homeownership opportunity with other things, like a YMCA or the homeless shelter, which I think are being addressed in other areas. So I would have to agree with the motion that we stick to the original intent, which is affordable housing for sale as a preference, a flexible approach, because of the, and when you talk about flexible, you really talk about the economics at the moment. That's the flexibility we need, because these people are going to build this if it doesn't work. And the economic ground beneath our feet is changing rapidly. And so, yeah, the for-sale preference and the electric preference, and from my point of view, let's stick with the housing.
And to, just to be clear, because clarity is the most important aspect here, when you say preference, you mean you're not closing the door to rental or a hybrid product?
Correct.
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 Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it's a question of how many proposers are we going to receive?
That's the economic realities, and you're right. I mean, we don't want one proposal or two, we want six, seven, so we can pick the best for the site.
Very good. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I see that we're providing input, although I don't really care for that word much, as to what direction we want to go. And could I have the motion restated that is currently on the floor?
Yes, the motion was to allow for an RFP that is broader, except for purely for-sale, to also consider rentals, considering the very low-income category, and the preference would be for-sale, as well as all-electric.
Okay. You want to take a vote on the motion, Mr. Mayor?
I would like to make my own comments.
Oh. What about, do I have to call on you?
The nice thing about being in the middle of the diocese is I get to listen to all my colleagues and take in their comments, and then I get to try to, at least in my own mind, wrap up and take from everybody to maybe come to some consensus. The, I really appreciate the fact that, what, a few months ago, we made this purchase. At that time, we were looking at what I consider to be the missing link in our affordable housing. That missing link is, because we have quite a bit of subsidized housing in town, we have quite a bit, but we do not have that link of having an affordable-for-sale product that can help our citizens take that step up to the next level of personal wealth and accomplishment. That was the original thought that we had, and I think that that still is a very viable thought that we should try to pursue. The affordability of a for-sale product is something that I very much would urge us to go for. If that product comes as a partial for-sale, partial for rent, I'm fine with that as well, if that gives us the flexibility that all my colleagues have been talking about. So, along with that, and I think my colleague, Mr. Jones, mentioned it, this is a small property, like our friend from the YMCA, Mr. Persons. I'd also walk that property. It's a pretty small property. I don't know how a YMCA with needed parking and everything else could fit there, much less anything else. So as Mr. Jones had said, this property can't be all things to all uses. It's something that we, I think we need to look at the choices we have here, all of which are good choices, the homeless shelter, the YMCA, affordable-for-sale housing, and pick the one that is really needed in town, and perhaps of those that comes, rises to the top of what I would consider to be most beneficial. We are working on a homeless shelter elsewhere in town. We do have YMCA's in town, although there's some challenges there that I appreciate. But the bottom line is what my colleague, Claudia Bill de la Peña, said. We are looking to provide and help people who are here in town who have good jobs, your dental hygienist, a medical assistant, good jobs, people that we really want in town who are in trouble affording to be here. And we need to do what we need to do as much as we can to help those people stay in town and be part of our community. I would like to see, and I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see as good a... I would like to see, and I mentioned earlier, I'd like to see as good a quality product as we can possibly get, that we go with a vendor that is extremely well thought of in that community. If we can also work into it the ability to take care of our greenhouse gas emissions and that sort of thing, that is a good thing. But I think we need to concentrate on this location for that product rather than look into other items. So with that, I would call for a vote. And Madam Clark.
Councilmember Bildelapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion does carry 5-0. Thank you.
Very good. We have a second discussion tonight. And while our staff changes places, I'll talk just a minute about, that was a very good discussion. I compliment my colleagues on the discussion on the topics. So we do have our staff now taking their places. This discussion now is going to be on our water supply update. Many of you may have seen in the newspaper or seen on the news that California, despite having had a good December, has reverted to unfortunate form in that we've got a very large deficit occurring in our water supply. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our staff. I believe we have our Sustainability Director, Dr. Helen Cox, along with Dan Druigan from the Cuyagus Water Service, and he's the Manager of Resources. So please, if I could turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We're here tonight to bring you a report on the status of the city's water supply. I'm joined on the dais by our Public Works Director, Cliff Finley, by our Senior Sustainability Analyst, John Brooks, and by Dan Druigan, the Manager of Resources for the city's water supplier, Cuyagus Municipal Water District, and he will be making tonight's presentation. Our report tonight is very timely, as the topic is breaking news in Los Angeles today. Just this afternoon, Metropolitan Water District declared a water shortage emergency and the water use restrictions that it will place on its customers. Dan Druigan will explain to us the actions that Metropolitan took today, the events leading up to this, and its implications for the city. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, great. Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Dan Druigan, and I'm the Manager of Resources with Cuyagus Municipal Water District. I'm actually joined this evening with our General Manager, Tony Goff of Cuyagus, and he's sitting right here in the front row. And Helen is right. Today, we had an extraordinary action from Metropolitan Water District where they adopted, for the first time ever, an emergency water conservation program for a portion, only a portion of its service area. And that includes areas that are highly dependent on state water project supplies. So I know that it's Public Works Appreciation Week, and we're going to talk about one of the most important public works projects that has brought water here to our area in southeast Ventura County and to the city of Thousand Oaks. What you see right here on this title slide is something that we've put forward to the community over the past year, and it's connecting southeast Ventura County to this critical reservoir up north, Lake Orville. And you can see the transition. This is a big change from 2019 to now. That tentacle right there is the Enterprise Bridge. That's one section of Lake Orville, and it looks very similar today to that image right there on the right. A little background about Cuyagus Water District. We were formed in 1953 by local communities to develop a supplemental water source. You can see right there on the map on the right how we articulate down here in southern California to that small section of Ventura County. We covered the cities of Simi Valley, Moore Park, Thousand Oaks, Camarillo, also Port Huaneme and City of Oxnard. We joined the Metropolitan Water District in 1960, so it took us some time to figure out how to best provide that supplemental water service to the communities in our service area. And so we joined Metropolitan in 1960 with the expectation that we would eventually connect to the state water project. In fact, the first deliveries of state water to our service area occurred in 1972. We serve about 640,000 people within that yellow shaded area. We're governed by a five-member elected board, and we have 70 employees at the district, many of which actually live in the city of Thousand Oaks. The water purveyors that serve the city of Thousand Oaks, many of you are already familiar with this, but to recap, the three principal water agencies that serve your city are California American Water Company, the California Water Service Company. Both of those are privately owned investor utilities. And then we have the city's own utility, the city of Thousand Oaks. And there's a small sliver of Camrosa Water District up to the north. The city is entirely dependent virtually on the state water project supplies that come through Cuyagus that we serve these agencies. So I wanted to really hammer this home within the first couple of slides with some key takeaways for everyone here. There are insufficient supplies to meet normal demands in the Cuyagus service area this year. This is, in fact, the worst drought in the history of Cuyagus and in the history of the state water project, since imported water from the system came to Cuyagus in 1972. The Department of Water Resources, they are the operator of the state water project. They will provide, they're prepared to provide, additional water supplies to meet critical human health and safety needs this year. We're going to talk more about that concept later on in this presentation. But when we start taking that water eventually, there is a high probability this year of a no-outdoor-water-use mandate for a portion of this year, as soon as potentially September and into next year if supplies do not improve on the state water project system this fall and winter. So how did we get here? This is a big change. This is a sudden change. If there's any theme here tonight bouncing around from crisis to crisis, this will be a defining issue for Thousand Oaks this summer and for all communities that we serve in southeast Ventura County. To talk about the state water project and how this works, we have the Northern Sierras. That can be imagined as the California Water Bank that serves 23 million people. The majority of that population, 19 million, reside in southern California in the Metropolitan Water District service area. That snowpack accumulates in the wintertime, and it runs off in the spring and summer months into large reservoirs that flow south all by gravity to the Bay Delta. You can see Lake Orville right there and those tentacles that reach into the Feather River watershed. Lake Orville is a 3.5 million acre foot reservoir. It's the headworks of the state water project. Lake Orville drains into the Feather River. The Feather River eventually meets up with the Sacramento River draining into the Delta, all by gravity. From the Delta, we need to pump that water south, that's the Department of Water Resources with their pumping plant, through the California Aqueduct. And you can see at the terminus down there, three different branches. The coastal branch that comes into San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara Counties; the west branch that comes into the northwest area of the Metropolitan Service Area, where we receive water in Ventura County from the west branch of the state water project. And then there's also the east branch that serves the eastern service areas of the Metropolitan Water District, and that's principally the Chino Basin area and the main San Gabriel Basin areas. Now, another imported watershed that the Metropolitan Water District has access to is the Colorado River and the upper Colorado River Basin. And this is partially the reason why in calendar year 2021, the situation was not as severe because at that time Metropolitan was maximizing the amount of water that it was importing from this watershed, from the Colorado River, into the service area. And in fact, last year, we started a unique operation that does not occur in this extreme drought to actually pump a small amount of Colorado River water into the Cuyagus service area. That's continuing today. The issue with our snowpack and on the state water project supplies, this is the issue, and it's climate change. Over the past 10 years, there have only been two years since 2011 where the snowpack has been above average, significantly above average. What we're dealing with here is extreme variability with our water supplies. You can see the last drought under Governor Brown's tenure from 2012 to 2016, how those water years shaped up with our Sierra snowpack. And then what happened? We had record-breaking storms in 2017, busted us out of the drought, right? And now we see that extreme variability occurring again in 2018. In 2019, another record banner year for water supply. And now in 2022, we're in the third consecutive year of an extremely dry situation for our water supplies for the state water project. Now, how does snowpack translate to water that actually gets pumped down south to southern California? That looks something like this. And so this bar chart right here shows the final state water project allocations that the Department of Water Resources announces to its state water project contractors. What we see is with this red line is the degradation of the reliability of that supply to southern California, and that's primarily influenced by climate change. What we see actually in the history of the state water project on this graph is that there's never been a back-to-back, single-digit allocation of this water supply until now. We're essentially living in something that, in a period that has never been experienced before with the history of this project. So to recap, this is the third year of extreme drought. When we think of threes, this is the driest three-year period on record for our state water supply. We experienced the driest three months, January through March 2022. We've had a whiplash of a water year, right? We've seen that term in the news. A record December, the snowiest month on record, to now the driest three months in the history of California, and now that's impacting our state water supply. And on the bottom here, this chart, you can see the, this is actually the lowest three-year total from the state water project system ever. Now, we think about, how come we didn't, how could we have prepared for this, right? Well, the department's own lowest forecast of three of those deliveries would have been 1 million acre feet. So we're only receiving a fraction of the department's lowest modeling scenario for this system. So that tells us that our baseline modeling needs to be reevaluated in the future. So state water project-dependent areas, and what does that mean? So Metropolitan Water District serves 19 million people, six-county service area, and this image right here shows the shaded areas that are highly dependent on this water supply. To the west, you can see Cuyagus Municipal Water District, Las Virginas Municipal Water District, and the LA Department of Water and Power, perhaps the biggest agency that will be impacted by this this year. To the east, you see the main San Gabriel Basin agencies and also the Chino Basin agencies that serve that population. In total, it's about 6.6 million people that will be impacted by this shortfall this year. This picture right here shows the Cuyagus distribution system in red and how we connect to the Metropolitan Water District system. Just for a little more background on that, you can see Castaic Lake right there at the top of the image and how that pipeline from Metropolitan comes down to their Jensen Treatment Plant in Granada Hills, and state water makes its way through two parallel feeders that connect up to that single connection point that connects southeast Ventura County to Metropolitan's system right there at the edge of Simi Valley and Chatsworth. What's also happening this year, I mentioned the pumping of Colorado River water, that actually occurs to the east on this image right here near the border of Glendale and Burbank. There's a small pump station that's pumping in a small volume of Colorado River water that only meets a fraction of our water needs here in southeast Ventura County. So they're actually, they're reimagining the system at Metropolitan to do that extraordinary action this year. So a little bit more about operating scenarios and how this has unfolded chronologically. The Bay Delta is a critical component of this, right? I mentioned all of our water supply travels by gravity to this point. We must pump that south. So what happens in the Bay Delta during an extreme drought situation like this? Well, this was an announcement back in December 1st, 2021, the Department of Water Resources actually announced a 0% state water project allocation that we would have to plan for this year. And this image shows that they are prioritizing keeping water supplies back in Lake Orville to flush out the salinity that's coming in from the San Francisco Bay that's fouling this estuary, this system that we need to convey the freshwater supplies south to those pumping plants, and those pumping plants pump it to southern California. So they're maintaining the water quality requirements in the Delta, so we don't lose that system. That's a big problem for the state water project is that we have to pump the water south from this very environmentally sensitive area. We've talked about a through-Delta solution for decades, a tunnel underneath the Delta, a tunnel around the Delta, and it has not come to pass yet. So what we see right here is, in the summertime, health and safety needs. So that's water that the department is prepared to deliver to us when our state water project water supply runs out. Now, when that water supply gets delivered to meet those health and safety needs, the state is expecting some very rigorous mandatory water conservation actions that will be taken to the areas that depend on this water. That's the 0% allocation back December 1st. And then what happened? Well, we had December, right? December was the snowiest month on record, and in January 20th, the Department of Water Resources bumped up the allocation to 15%. And at the time, that was very conservative to bump it up to 15%. And with a 15% allocation, Metropolitan was expecting that it could meet all demands for its state water project-dependent areas for the entire year with no mandatory conservation. Then we had the whiplash. Right here in December, this image shows over 19, almost 19 trillion gallons of water poured across the state. As we went through those next three months, essentially nothing here in February, and how this looks on a chart with our precipitation index here that tracks the accumulation of water supplies up in these northern Sierra watersheds, that's that flatlining that you see right here from January all the way through March. So in the beginning of this water year, a water year runs from October to September, we were tracking some of our wettest years on record. And then we all of a sudden flatlined and we're about to end the year below average. Now, we are seeing some late-season storms come in in April. We've seen the news on that, but these late-season storms are not enough. We just had the driest three-month period on record in California. Our watersheds are dry. Think of the dry sponge. When that water supply hits, it's not, it's not going to come down. It's going to get soaked up in that watershed and not come into the reservoirs to appreciably give us any more supply this year. And this was what led to the decision on March 18th for the Department of Water Resources to slash the allocation down from 15% down to 5%. And that is, currently, that is the final allocation that we will receive this year. So what happened when the allocation changed from 15% to 5%? Well, the chart on the left shows with a 15% base allocation, that's the light blue box at the bottom, Metropolitan had balanced all supplies for demands that year, essentially not needing any mandatory conservation. Now, with a 5%, you can see that blue box at the bottom shrinking to just a third of that base supply that we needed to get through the year. We see new boxes coming at the top of this on the right, demand reduction and health and safety. Demand reduction is pretty self-explanatory. That's the need for mandatory conservation. Health and safety is essentially water supplies that we don't have. You can think of it as welfare that the Department of Water Resources is giving to Metropolitan, and Metropolitan will have to actually pay that water back in future years when the system allows for supplies to be paid, to pay back that water supply. We look at this on a monthly time step, January through December, on a calendar year basis, that's how Metropolitan manages demands. We run out of the state water project 5% allocation and also supplies that Metropolitan has in storage in San Luis Reservoir, which is just south of the Delta, by May. So starting in June, you can see that tan-colored bar showing up. That's the health and safety water that the state is providing to Metropolitan. That actually increases the risk of a no-outdoor-water-use scenario if we don't conserve. You can see these white boxes at the top, starting in June, the need to conserve. Those boxes are not supplies that Metropolitan has to meet demand. That's essentially the implementation of mandatory conservation. So health and safety water, what does, again, a little bit more on that. In the state water project contract, the state may allocate water supplies on some other basis to meet domestic supply, fire protection, and sanitation needs. There was a big effort, lobbying effort from Metropolitan early in the water year that that health and safety water supply should include some essential commercial, industrial, institutional use. The state has since taken the position that the health and safety water supplies will not include that. In fact, it should be already included with the overall block of water that they'll be providing to us, so no additional increments for that supply. There's a heavy expectation that when we start taking this supply, that it excludes outdoor water use, and that's what that looks like right there. So I know this is a very sobering message right now. Now we have to triage the situation, and how can we best avoid this scenario right now? And that's with the action that Metropolitan had taken today. I come back to what we just talked about earlier. Metropolitan adopted an emergency water conservation program that allows agencies to take two paths. The one path is a one-day-a-week watering restriction for potable water or equivalent. So this is a one-day-a-week watering mandate that will be placed on agencies, and it will be up to individual local agencies on how they want to best implement that in the spirit of meeting one-day-a-week watering. There will have to be rigorous enforcement that we have to prove to Metropolitan to avoid surcharges. Now, the Metropolitan, the Cuyagus water rate right now is right around $1,600 per acre foot. The surcharge, if you do not meet this, is $2,000 an acre foot on top of that. Now, the other pathway is a volumetric target based on population, and this is that concept of gallons per capita per day. And so all of us at home, we all have our own unique gallons-per-capita-per-day usage that we use in and around our home. Each home is different. But in a total, for our agencies, we have one population for each agency, and we have the water use for each agency, and that calculates out for a aggregate gallons-per-capita-per-day target. target for each agency. And so what you see right here on this bottom image is that that, there's a tiered structure here where you have to be beneath 55 gallons-per-capita-per-day, which is the state's standard for what you should be using indoors per person. And then a small amount of water on top of that, that Metropolitan has available from its normal state water project supplies. In total, that total volumetric target allocation is about 80 gallons-per-capita-per-day. Now, to tie that directly back to Thousand Oaks, your current gallons-per-capita-per-day for the entire, well, for this city, the city's utility, not the other areas, not the investor-owned areas, but your city's utility is 175, 175 gallons-per-capita-per-day. So to get from 175 to 80, you can think of that as, as more than a 50% cut in your water use, or just about a 50% cut. This is that concept again of gallons-per-capita-per-day. You can think of them as gallons stacked up, right? And how that water use makes up your use in and around the home. The outdoor water use is the biggest component of that. Now, this is just for illustrative purposes only, this shows 136 gallons-per-capita-per-day, but of this total, that's about, you know, between 40 to 70% of your total use is outdoors. So how are we going to do this? How are we going to get through this with these mandatory water restrictions that are coming down? We have to focus again on residential turf and non-functional turf. Non-functional turf is a very big topic right now. We've seen this in Southern Nevada with how they've banned non-functional turf. And in fact, Governor Newsom, his March 28th executive order directed the State Water Board, who is our water regulator, to implement a ban on irrigating non-functional turf in and around commercial, industrial, and institutional buildings. So I have an image right here of, of a potential non-functional turf area in the city of Thousand Oaks on the top right. But this is tough. This will be really difficult because with a one-day-a-week watering mandate, mandate, we're essentially signaling to customers that we need you to sacrifice your turf to save trees. We need to save the urban canopy. We need to prioritize parks. How are we going to do that together in creative ways, potentially trucking in recycled water? Having local agencies with their one-day-a-week watering ordinances, there are, there is the ability to have exemptions for, for parks and for school fields. It's up to the locals on how they want to do that. But if we don't achieve the conservation goals over the next few months, we're all going to have to go to no-outdoor-water-use anyway. And so I want to make that very clear to the city council.
What did you just say? We all have to do what?
So with the one-day-a-week watering mandate, it's up to the locals, agencies, it's up to the city, how they want to handle exemptions for parks, for school fields, for areas that our community prioritizes for recreation, for golf courses, for example. But if we don't meet conservation goals on the aggregate for the entire community, the city of Thousand Oaks will still face a no-outdoor-water-use mandate, potentially as soon as September.
We're facing what kind of a mandate?
A no-outdoor-water-use mandate.
New after-water use?
No, no outdoor.
No after-water use? Okay. Yeah. Well, you know, I, just if I may interrupt for a moment, I was on the park board just recently, and we made significant reductions in the amount of non-functional grass or whatever you called it. About 20% of all of the lawn was removed and replaced with other things. So are you saying there have to be further cuts for like the, our park district, would you envision?
Well, we would have to work together to identify that and with the, and with the purveyors that serve the parks directly. But what we're saying right now is with non-functional turf, the state is coming up with its definition of that. And this, these mandates that Metropolitan just adopted today will accelerate how we view non-functional turf in our communities and how, and the need to, to ban the irrigation of that probably sooner than when those final mandates come down from the State Water Board.
Thank you.
So back to the presentation and Newsom's March 28th executive order. Again, he directed the State Water Board to consider a ban on the watering of decorative grass at businesses and institutions. That's currently in development right now at the State Board for regulation. What's the difference, right? Functional turf versus non-functional turf? Well, non-functional turf are areas that, that do not have high recreational value. These are strips usually typically of turf around your, your business parks, your, your different parkways that potentially might need to have the irrigation stopped and completely banned at. Now, there, there could be ways where we could transfer that water, right? If we ban that watering at those areas, then maybe that water could be used to supplement parks, school fields, those areas that are functional. That's the purpose and goal of this executive order. And there are rebates to, to assist with this. We have a very successful turf replacement program that I'm sure many of you have heard about during the last drought. It was very popular to replace turf grass with drought-tolerant landscapes. Now, with the, a one-day-a-week watering mandate, that's challenging because it's very difficult to install a new landscape that, that has a watering requirement during only a one-day-a-week watering mandate. So the turf replacement program will actually postpone new plantings, but we still want you to rip out the turf so we can realize the immediate savings, and then we'll postpone the plantings until the water supplies improve on the state water project. This is similar to what Marin had done, actually, last year when they were facing really strict water conservation mandates for their service area, Marin County. So to recap, these drought actions right now, April 12th, Metropolitan, they heard an information item on the one-day-a-week watering mandate or equivalent. On April 26th, which was today, Metropolitan adopted an emergency water conservation program for its state water project-dependent areas that has the two pathways for compliance, one-day-a-week watering or a volumetric target based on gallons-per-capita-per-day. Tomorrow night, the Cuyahoga Board will follow with action passing through the action that Metropolitan just adopted to our purveyors, to our customers, to move forward with that. And then the compliance period for this, to, to, for the surcharges to go into effect would be June 1st, 2022. This is how this looks on an ad. We're currently developing this. We have right now a crisis of supply, but also a crisis of communication because this happened, this has all happened very quickly. And we're working with our purveyors to develop advertising like this that we can put in the paper, help purveyors out with messaging to the public. We're all, we're all frantically doing that right now. Also, we, we are launching a new drought response task force, and we would invite the city of Thousand Oaks to participate in this. This is something that's new. We've never done this before, but the situation warrants it. And representatives from each city that Cuyahoga serves and large water, water agency would be included in this drought task force. And we would also include one elected representative, is our initial thinking here, from each city, and then also the city manager, if, or the city managers designee for this drought response task force. It would be monthly meetings on Zoom, and we would talk about different ways on how we can manage through this crisis through the end of the year. We'll reach out soon to the city of Thousand Oaks staff on this to see who, who your representatives might want, you might want to be on and participate on this task force. And we'll start out meetings hopefully as soon as next month. And that concludes my briefing. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
If I might just add one additional point, as you mentioned at the end, that they are considering the, a new measure of creating a, a task force. And so we are going to be back in front of the city council, this is an update briefing tonight, be back in front of the city council, the 24th of May. Be our intention at that point in time, if the council wanted to make a, make an appointment of a designee to that task force as an elected official, you'll have the opportunity to make that appointment that evening.
Just a point of clarification, did you say surcharges for non-compliance start on July 1?
June 1st.
June 1st. So basically, a month from now, we have to cut, cut back 50%?
That's correct. So, so May, you can almost think of it as being one-day-a-week watering awareness month so that all of our purveyors can move forward with their own ordinances. Takes time to bring these forward to policy boards like, like yourself to approve these for your city, and those surcharges would go into effect June 1st.
So we'd have to take care of our noticing to the public and everything and come up with something by June 1st?
That is correct.
And that is really why we wanted to do an update item first. So this, if you've seen LA Times article, was posted just a few hours ago before we walked in here, so I can assure you, we're the first agency having this conversation. Cities of Simi Valley, cities of Moore Park, this is all forthcoming. So it's a chance to really put it on the radar. I felt that was incredibly important for all of us to begin having this, this discussion because it is a extremely tight timeline. We're going to be providing, you know, our comments as this moves forward in terms of timing associated with that, and our team's very actively engaged in that. One of the big challenges, I think it's important to remember, and you saw it in the presentation, is that we are, in the city of Thousand Oaks, we have three purveyors, two private companies, and a public agency. It's extremely confusing for the public. Oftentimes, don't even know who their water purveyor is. And so in this case, we're working very much to be in sync with those, and that's why we're going to be back in front of you on the 24th. A lot of groundwork will have to happen between now and then.
I'm, the timing on this is shockingly brief. Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. A year ago this time, I spoke with our planning, or our public works head is Cliff Finley. I said, Cliff, we're heading for, towards a drought. I've got a Ben Franklin at home. My wife has a rain gauge and keeps track of it on her calendar, and you could track how we are in a drought. And I said to him, why are we not conserving? Why have we not pulled the trigger last year? And he says, the question comes to the purveyors of the water, and that's Cuyahoga and Metropolitan to pull the trigger on that. If my wife's tracking could pick it up, my teaching at Ventura College in the Water Science Department, where I train some of the people in your facility in the water treatment industry, I could see it. Why is it taking so long for Metropolitan and Cuyahoga to ring the bell and bring this? It should have been done last year. Not that it's going to be, make any difference, but in the future, we're going to face this again. What was it that keeps you from bringing this forward last year instead of this year?
Yeah, and I think I can, I can address that, Councilmember McNamee. So we had, started off the water year tracking one of the wettest years on record, right? We had that December that blew everything away with how much snowpack had accumulated in the Sierras. The 15% state water allocation that the department had released was conservative at that time, overly conservative. The runoff projections were through the roof. But the departments, the Department of Water Resources, the state operator of the state water project, their own modeling did not predict this. I think the best way to, to answer your question is we're living in a period we have never lived in before. It's a big change, it's climate change, we need to change water use habits together, we need to change out our landscaping. This is about change. We need to change together, the city, the city and Cuyahoga, with how we manage through this crisis in the future. And to that point, one of the things that we're doing at Cuyahoga, we finished up a water supply alternative study, which is a part of our long-term liability planning process as well, because we are a state water project-dependent agency. So what kind of local supplies can we develop to soften and buffer this impact in future years? But that's a big change, that's a huge strategic change for Cuyahoga that has been a successful importer of state water to the city for, for over 60 years. And so we continue to do that, we continue, and we want to work with you on that in the future.
Thank you. I've got, that's question one. I've got two more to go. We good, Mayor?
Please go ahead. I can count to three.
Mr. Finley, when I came on board last year as a council member, one of my big emphasis was to work with water sustainability and reuse. And we talked about running a line from our wastewater plant that I believe you and I discussed, $10 million or 10 million gallons a day of quality water goes out into a stream leaving down to Camarillo and further out, about recapturing that water and bringing it back up. And you came up with a wonderful plan, working with our partners at Las Vergenes. I'd like you to explain that project, but also you and I have discussed capturing that water in the Camarillo basin there, where Camarosa is located, about collecting the water, both stormwater and what comes out of our wastewater plant. I'm looking for a vision here for water sustainability and reuse here. What do we have in the works and what can we do in the future, and what are some of our challenges?
So, thank you, Councilmember McNamee. The, the first thing that this council had put in, put in, put in place several years back was the revitalization of the Las Robles well. And originally, we were thinking we might construct a treatment plant there, but our neighbors, Las Vergenes Municipal Water District, are, are building a similar desalter. And we are now working with them and Cuyahoga, actually, and, and really as a, as a group, as a, as a, as an area, looking at developing that local resource and treating it in the most efficient and cost-effective way. And at this point in time, we're thinking of combining that water, sending it over to Las Vergenes for them to treat in their plant, and they would then deliver it back through the Cuyahoga system to us as an additional local water supply. That's the first, that, and that would provide the city of Thousand Oaks about roughly 10% of our, our, as a local supply. It's not, not everything we can eat, but that's the first step. We're also looking at potential diversion of stormwater into that, into that same treatment facility, starting first on the east side of the city that would naturally flow into their wastewater system. But again, that exercise could grow into future water resources throughout the rest of the city to the, to the west. The treatment plant is another, is another option. Currently, our discharge from the treatment plant is utilized to nearly 100% by Camarosa Water District. They divert that water and put it into settling basins and ponds for the Pleasant Valley Water District. It's used in the Oxnard Plains and in their district. They're actually, in combination with the county, looking at additional projects, some additional basins that we might be able to divert some stormwater into to add additional groundwater down at that end of the basin. Again, these, these water, when, when we talk about resources, we really need to talk about regional resources. Camarosa is a state water user, city of Oxnard is. So even by us helping them get more water that they can use, frees up supplies basically for the city of Thousand Oaks from, on the state water project. So we're all in this together as a county and as a region, and that's the way we're approaching it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Bill DeLipendi, I think you had some questions.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I'm wondering what, if apartment complexes or single-family homes had gray water systems, how much of an impact would that make or would have they made?
Those complexes use most of their water for landscaping, or a lot of them do. The HOAs in particular tend to have a lot of turf grass, and actually, they'll be one of the first entities that we'll be reaching out to. In terms of gray water, it depends on the size of the system. If you're talking about putting it for a complete multifamily development, I think the challenge is for existing developments, they don't have dual plumbing, so there isn't really an easy way of capturing that water. It's a different question with new developments. You could dual-plumb a new development. The, the challenge is that it adds quite a bit of cost. Not only do they have to collect and recirculate the water, there are strict health and safety requirements on the treatment of that water. So it's a feasible option for new development, but it's not really, it's sort of cost prohibitive or it's, it's just too difficult to do with existing developments because of the plumbing
And just to add, add one more thing there. Your multifamily residences, your townhomes and apartments, as far as indoor water use, they're using actually probably less than 25% of the typical water use of a single-family home. They're very, very efficient and low.
And that would be my segue into enforcement. If the average household use is anywhere from eight to 14, 15 CCFs, and we have estates or single-family home properties that use 500 and more, how are we going to enforce that? Are we going to be proactive, reactive? Are we going to see neighbors turning each other in? Or how will that be enforced? And Mr. Dugan did, did speak about enforcement. How will that look like?
Well, the details are going to be brought back to you on the 24th, but in general terms, the enforcement is going to be first education. We are actually developing door hangers now, and we are going to have our staff, the next time they drive by, in fact, following, starting next week, when they drive by a residence and they see water flowing off the residence, they're going to give them a door hanger and say, hey, you guys, we need to be conserving water. Please fix your sprinklers. Please know that this one-day-a-week watering is coming. You can't water, you're not going to be able to water your turf as often anymore. coming. You can't water, you're not going to be able to water your turf as often anymore." So we're going to try to educate people, remind people that it's time. That's what the month of May is about. It's a warning month. And by the time we get to June, we will need to be actively enforcing through our ordinance requirements, which...
Yeah, but do we have the personnel to do that?
Well, we are going to have to allocate the personnel to do that. And we may come back and request to contract additional services. We, we need to be successful at this, at this conservation effort, obviously. The fines are substantial. And we make, we may also come back to council with a potential for, for additional penalties for water wasting. So there's, there's opportunities. We're, we're looking at all the options. Again, we want to be consistent with what our other two water purveyors are doing in town. So we'll be convening with them later this week and next to, to make sure that what, what they're doing, we're doing, what we're doing, they're doing, so that our, so that our enforcement is similar.
So just to be clear, and this, I think this, is this my third question? Okay. Just to be clear, we will have three different task force teams or enforcement teams. One for CalAM, the other one for California Water, and one for the city driving around town and giving out tickets or door hangers. Is, is that what it will look like?
Potentially, yes.
And there will not be any sort of grant coming from Cuyahoga or MWD for the extra costs that the city will be incurring for enforcement?
So I, I can address that question. The Metropolitan action today did allow a certain portion of funds that we have access to from Metropolitan to help assist, fund, fund the enforcement. So we, there will be some funding opportunities to, to help with this.
And I think your, your point is a very good one. And that's why I mentioned at the outset, being in sync is incredibly important. We have the additional complexity of the three purveyors. And so what the Dos Vientos HOA experiences, the North Ranch HOA experiences, and what Central TO experiences needs to be in sync. And so we're, whether that's fines and penalties, whether that's the, the number of times you receive a door hanger, we want to be in alignment on those things. So we're going to be working very carefully with those private purveyors.
Thank you.
And just to, for, I'm, I'm a little, I am more than a little frustrated with the timeframe here. The timeframe of coordinating three separate agencies with any type of, luckily, our other agencies are private companies, which are a little more nimble than a public agency who needs all the noticing that we need to do. We won't even know what it is until the 24th, because that's when we're going to vote on it. And then we have one week to get that word out to the public. This is a, a real mountain that we're going to have to climb. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, the, I know that three of our parks, two in North Ranch and Triumphal Park, use reclaimed water from Las Vergenes. Is there any opportunity to expand that? I guess that's because it goes there by gravity. I mean, is there any way, and I guess I'm latching onto what Councilman McNamee said, to create more tertiary treated water to go to landscaping?
So I, let me take a stab at that. It's my understanding that, that those systems are fully subscribed. In other words, there's not really any additional water that they have available, particularly in the summer. And in fact, Las Vergenes, and I assume Triumphal, although I haven't heard this specifically, is, is cutting back their recycled water use by, I want to say 25%, is I think the number I've heard.
Even cutting back the recycle? Why would they do that?
Well, currently, their recycled system in the summertime, they actually have to add potable water to it, because there's more demand than they have recycled water to use.
That's, that doesn't, that defeats your purpose right there.
Right. It, it really has to do with, again, too much irrigation being used is what that represents, because that's, that's all of their wastewater that they treat, their entire system, and they can't support the recycled water demand in the summer, which is turf.
If, if you could water one day a week, how many minutes can you water?
Under the city's ordinance, it, it would, it would vary at the different level. But at the maximum, it would be 15 minutes. But also depending on the level that we bring, the council approves at the next meeting, it may only be allowed to water using low-flow irrigation devices and no sprinklers.
Well, in my case, I have a very small amount of turf. But I'd be better off, if you can water for 15 minutes, to do two seven and a half minutes, two different days. I don't want to get into too many fine points here, but would that meet the requirements? If you could do it two days for half the time?
Not under Metropolitan's mandate, no. It would be a one-day-a-week.
That's kind of a stupid, stupid rule then, because you get much more efficient water than if you dump your water all on in one 15-minute episode. One last question. I was in government a long time ago, and we were talking about a peripheral canal. Whatever happened to that?
So I can take that one. So the peripheral canal was, was envisioned to be the completion of the state water project, right? We have this delta that is the, the pinch point of our water system of bringing the Sierra snowpack water down to Southern California. And, you know, if we had the peripheral canal, if we had a tunnel under the delta, then perhaps in those really wet years, we could have conveyed more water to Southern California to fill our groundwater basins, depleted reservoirs and other areas. But we didn't have it. And so that's, it's still on the books with the state. They're currently in the environmental review phase for a single tunnel option. Under Governor Brown, you, you might have recalled the twin tunnel solution under the delta for redundancy. And that project has since been downsized to a single tunnel, which is still in review right now at the state in the environmental review phase.
Well, I, I won't pursue this, but I think the peripheral canal, if we built it back in the 80s, it would have been very inexpensive to build by today's standards. And I think it would have been a big help, but that's, I was going to say water under the bridge, but I won't say that.
I, I was going to say water under the bridge too, but go ahead, Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, Council, I think we need to consider here is that we have a water crisis issue going on that looks like it's going to be up and down for many years to come. Very possibly. Is that a fair statement? And yet, we're looking at putting in between Kmart, the Baxter Building, across the street from Amgen, 50 acres out by Home Depot off of Wendy, plus probably a few others, that we're looking at a lot of housing going in, and yet we don't have water for them. And that may be a factor that we need to start looking at to see if we need to put in housing or not enough water we can't afford to put in the housing.
Right.
That's a, that's a real consideration, in my opinion. Second, is that, Mr. Finley? I look forward to working with you on stormwater capture and reuse. I acknowledge the agreements we have with CalAM, I believe, not CalAM, it's Camarosa, that, to me, stormwater capture and reuse, to take the 10 million gallons per day and be able to use it for Thousand Oaks use, as well as addressing Camarosa, can be accomplished. Because water sustainability and reuse, I think, is where we need to be on the immediate approach. And I think there's answers here. And we have some pretty bright people in your department. High expectations, Nader. So those are some of the things I would look forward to working with. And perhaps, Cuyahoga, you can assist us in this venture. But this is not going to work when we're putting in more housing and we're running out of water. We need to start doing some drastic measures here.
So...
There you go. We do, we do have, we do have one person online as a public speaker. So if we have any other questions, I realize, I'm just saying, we have one person online waiting for us to end our, our questioning.
Mr. Finley?
Yeah, I just had one point of clarification I did want to make, and I think it's important. When we talk about a new development today, and we're talking about condominiums, patio homes, townhouses, apartments, the, the typical apartment townhome uses, I mean, it uses between five and seven units of water a month. The typical, uh, single-family home uses 25 to 35 and on up in Thousand Oaks. So I just, I just want to make that point. It's, it's all about the outdoor watering is, is what that's about. It has nothing to do with the number of people that live there. Has to do with the size of the yard and, and how you, how you water it. So, thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Well, you probably know, this is for the gentleman from Cuyahoga. Thousand Oaks is a city loaded with thousands of single-family homes. That was the model back in the 60s and 70s. Planned communities, although there was no plan for drought at the time these communities went in. And so, yeah, you stand on any hillside and you look out and all you see is roofs. So I think you said 70% of the water use is outdoors and 30 is in. Okay. So, yeah, I just want to get down to the nuts and bolts. So for somebody who's living in a tract house, right, on a quarter acre, whatever it is, with tract houses all around them, they got a sprinkler system, they got a lawn, they got, you know, all the usual stuff, landscape, they've got a couple of kids, maybe, they got toilets, they got showers. What's the impact going to be? Are these people, and me included, are we, are we talking about putting in drip systems? Are we talking about tearing out lawns? And are we talking about what kind of conservation we talk about inside the house? I'm trying to get to the nuts and bolts of what this is really going to mean ultimately. And, and as Bob said, the timeframe is so small. I'm not quite sure how we can respond quickly enough. Anyway, talk about some of the things that are going to have to happen at one of these tract houses that we're loaded with.
Yeah. So what, what this means for the typical, average, single-family homeowner in Thousand Oaks, that if you have turf, you may have to sacrifice your turf to save trees and to save the urban canopy. I think that's the take-home message. You need to prioritize your one-day-a-week watering for, for the areas around your home that have high value. And that would likely be trees. Now, if you have warm-season grass, maybe on one-day-a-week watering, it's going to be very, very stressed, I think, to get through this, through, through this, through the fall, to where hopefully we have some storms that come back in the system. If you have cool-seasoned grass, it's likely going to die. It's likely going to go brown. And so I think the key message point from a lot of us that you'll see, and it's not just Cuyahoga, we share this problem with LADWP, with Las Vergenes, those areas on the east side, it's probably going to be, let your lawn go brown. And that's probably going to be a key message point that's going to resonate with our, our, our classic customers out here in Cuyahoga.
So we're going to have to redo our sprinkler systems, turn them off?
Yes, we would recommend that people replace, turn off lawn sprinklers and put in drip systems around trees to preserve the trees.
What about shrubs and things like, can they have drip too?
They can, yes. We recommend drought-tolerant and native plants, because they require a lot less and can generally survive on once-a-week watering.
But even the drip would be one day a week?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And also, you know, if people act now, they can take advantage of the turf rebate program. So right now, residents can apply for a turf rebate. They get $3 a square foot for, for killing their turf, essentially removing it, and then eventually replacing it with some other drought-tolerant landscaping. And as Dan mentioned, because that replanting program is on hold right now, they don't have to replant immediately, but they do need to apply for the turf rebate while they still have turf. They can't kill the turf and then submit an application once they just have dirt there or, or dead grass. So we would really strongly encourage a resident to apply for that program. And it will cover essentially the cost of redoing your sprinkler system to a drip system.
I mean, because in the heat of the summer, watering a lawn one day a week is fruitless.
Fruitless, absolutely.
We, what we really need to be doing is turn those sprinklers off, because the parks need that water. And we want the parks to have water. Remember, the goal is 50% conservation.
Right. I guess the, the big difference is, like you say, functional versus non-functional. Functional is our parks, our, our baseball fields for our kids, that kind of thing.
Our schools.
Non-functional, our schools, yeah. Non-functional is a lawn in front of your house.
Right.
Hmm. Well, that's going to take some adapt, adapting, isn't it? That's not the mindset, but, well, that's what life's all about, I guess. How about indoors? If 30% water uses indoors, what do, what do we do indoors?
So...
Don't take showers.
So, again, it's, it's important that, that your appliances are, are relatively, you know, that you, your showers have low-flow showerheads. You know, I don't know how many folks have decided, "Well, we're not in a drought anymore. Let me put back in that, that rain bucket showerhead I had." But, you know, we need to, we need to put back in those low, low-flow showerheads. If you've taken them out, otherwise, you need to make sure they're there. You need to make sure your, your toilets aren't running, that you're not wasting water.
Hmm. Maybe you don't flush quite as much.
Thank you.
I went in nuts and bolts.
There's health, and there's plenty of water for health and safety. They've told us that. The water, the problem is our outdoor water use. If, you know, we, the council adopted conservation levels at, back in the fall. We, you know, I'll tell you, we will likely be recommending a level four, which is roughly, what is the reduction? About 50%, 40%?
40%.
40% reduction. It has a list of restrictions. I mean, if you, if you're looking for a guide, that's probably where we're going to come back. It's pretty close. Talks about drip irrigation system only. In other words, no sprayheads, which pretty much eliminates turf. But, you know what? You can keep the rest, many of the rest of your plants looking just great on drip irrigation. Those who have converted, and maybe they converted last time, probably just have drip irrigation. Dr. Cox, Dr. Cox just has drip irrigation.
It's just going to take some work on the homeowner's side to get this done.
It is. This is a, this is an emergency.
Okay. All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any more questions for my colleagues? And I'll get, I'll get to this gentleman who's been patiently waiting online.
I, I, get to the patient, or the gentleman online, and I can go afterwards. That'll be okay. Sorry, just forced a habit during the whole day.
We, we tend, we tend to ask questions during our discussion as well. So I think we can, we can get to our gentleman online and...
Come back to our questions.
Then come back to our normal rote of things. We do have one public speaker. We have gentleman James Scott. Mr. Scott, if you're still on.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. This issue that's been brought to the council's attention this evening is something I've followed over many years. I'm involved with NCAT and others, National Center for Agricultural Technology. This is a constant topic about water. And I've seen, I've seen it become an issue across the country. I've been waiting patiently to see when it would reemerge. It's interesting that the water district says that this is a new issue. I can remember being less than 10 years old and putting bricks in my toilet. But here we are. With that being said, there was a daily allocation of 80 gallons per single-family residence. I must, I would like to verify that that number was correct, is what a target was. But with that, a standard orange tree at a five-foot width requires 10 gallons per week. And I've got 32 trees. So, City of Thousand Oaks, and specifically Ventura County, has some of the best agricultural land in the country, specifically designated as heritage soils by the USDA. I haven't planted my squash, corn, or anything else yet. So I guess the donkey and chickens are out. But my point specifically to the city council is, when I called in looking for an agricultural allocation, I was told that it was not something that Thousand Oaks Water had looked into. But with the discussions that are going to go forward in the preservation of our equestrian heritage, or even our agricultural heritage, it's going to come to boil. With that being said, I'll close by saying, I think we should keep the pumpkin fields as a park to protect the two oaks, which are now shrouded with pleats, to keep them from being... them from being cut down, and that, uh, the councilmember Mc, excuse me if I don't know your name specifically, but his idea of adding some type of a value add to the development that would be put at Hillcrest, I've seen it done in other places, and I think that it's absolutely feasible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That was our only, uh, public speaker. Uh, therefore, we'll go to any, any response from, to those ideas from our staff, and then we'll get back to council comments and questions.
So, uh, city councilmembers, one part of that public comment that I heard was the 80 gallons per capita per day, and if that is correct? Uh, that is correct. And so, the 55 gallons per capita per day is backstopped by the state, and then Metropolitan only has that small increment, uh, which is that 25 gallons per capita per day on top, and it's really intended to meet the same level of conservation that the one-day-a-week watering is. The issue with the one-day-a-week watering is there's no volumetric goal or target with that. We, we have to wait and see how the conservation accumulates when we have that implemented in, in the city. Now, that 26 shrinks, that 26 gallons per capita per day that Metropolitan has will shrink if we don't meet the conservation goals. And then essentially what we're left is that backstop of 55 gallons per capita per day. And what does that translate to, to a message? That's no outdoor water use.
Very good. Any, uh, council comments? Yes, we have, we have one from Ms. Odele Peña, and I see, uh, Mr. McNamee also has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Engler. My question is, the supply that we have, should we go to no outdoor watering, um, severe drought conditions? How long is that supply that we have for our region going to last? Is it about six months for health and safety?
Right. So, so when that, if that situation comes to pass with the no outdoor water use and the health and safety water that the state will provide to Metropolitan and to Cuyagus, that water's expected to continue through next year. Um, if we don't see the supplies come into the system, I think it's hard to say that we'll have another December like we just had this past year. And, uh, you know, we would have to see if it's going to be another La Nina year. If the supplies don't manifest, uh, the state is prepared to continue that, that 55 gallons per capita per day back, uh, backstop into next year.
Thank you.
Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Finley, again, we're talking about functional versus non-functional greenery, outland landscape. Any direction from you or anyone else on staff regarding the medians that we have that have, uh, natural grass that needs to be watered, converting that over into other drought, drought-tolerant, uh, plants, or even into, uh, rocks that I'm not real excited about as far as aesthetics, but any other options we want to look at here?
So, during the last drought, we removed, uh, most all of our, of the city's turf. What you might see left out there is more likely, uh, grass that has grown naturally, possibly over the winter. Um, one of the things the city will be doing is looking at the rest, any remaining turf that we have, uh, here at City Hall, as well as there are several other monuments, areas that, uh, the example being Lynn and Hillcrest, where there's a fairly large turf area. Uh, we will be looking at how we might, uh, remove that turf, stop watering it for sure, and maybe replace it with some mulch and some landscaping. Again, we have to be very careful about planting any new plants at this point in time. We'll likely put off the planting until, uh, closer to the fall or winter, when we might get some natural, natural rainfall to help out with that, and the, and the temperatures obviously would be more favorable. Um, so we'll be doing that. The other thing I want to say is, uh, the, the city is stockpiling mulch. Um, that mulch is available at the library for free. We keep there, there's a bin there that's, that's, we keep it full, uh, or attempt to keep it full. Um, that is a great alternative, if you're, interim alternative for an area that, uh, where you are removing your turf, uh, and you just want to cover it with mulch, or even covering the areas where you're keeping your trees, uh, with mulch, because again, that helps keep the water, uh, lets the water get into the roots. So, uh, that's a, that's a great method for water efficiency, so that, and there's lots of other ideas. Uh, we'll be putting stuff out in, in social media, and, and you can always contact the city for, for, uh, for, for additional information.
Second question, uh, I have is, uh, last year at the Ventura County American, or, uh, Ventura County Association of Water Agencies, they had a wonderful presentation by the Farmers' Bureau, and they spoke of how the farmers here in Ventura County have overdrafted their wells, and the state has come in and told them that 40% of their land is not to be planted, and leaving soil feral is not a good way of maintaining the biology within the soil for future growth. And that's going to really devastate this county from an agricultural standpoint. I don't have an answer for them, but that's just what we're up against, and that's what we're facing regarding decisions on water use and utilization. As far as identifying who's not complying, my, my heart goes out to the homes that have fruit trees that need to sustain themselves with water. Some of them are actually productive properties that actually make income on it. I really just, uh, found it very, very saddening to, at the last time we went through this, many of the trees we lost here in Thousand Oaks that had to be cut down because they died, lack of water. And we're going to be facing that again because those trees have been around 50, 60 years, and they're a part of our community and part of the look and feel that we love so much. So, I suspect we're going to have more trees dying as we move forward with this. And I guess one of the best ways to identify who's not complying with the, uh, water restrictions for outdoor use is whoever has a green lawn is most likely the one who's the culprit. And that's just an option, and I, I really am not in favor of having drones fly overhead to take a look in my backyard, and I hope we don't go down that direction.
Mayor? Thank you. Um, go, go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to respond, um, so, so, you know, we are solely dependent here in Thousand Oaks on imported water. Um, so, some of the other agencies have, have blended, blended water sources. They have, uh, some groundwater, some state water. Um, so, Camarillo being an example, they recently just brought a desalter online. So, I would be, I would be hoping, and I, and I think, again, as we all talk, this is, this is a county-wide problem. It's a Cuyagus-wide problem. Uh, and as far as the, the person with their fruit trees in the, in their yard, you know, we're all in this together. Um, you know what? If I need to kill my lawn to make sure that my, my urban forest remains healthy, that's probably a better long-term decision on my part. And we all need to think that way. What can we do to keep our community as beautiful as it can be? And, and continue to make Thousand Oaks the beautiful place that it is.
And just building on the comment about trees, um, we did procure a water truck we, um, during the last, uh, drought, and we did that kind of specific to some of the points you're making. We actually used reclaimed water and trucked that water in through specific to some of those, those critical trees. And, uh, we've already had conversations about ensuring that that continues forward.
Yeah, we had to make sure at least our, our heritage trees are, uh, survive through this. I know in the last drought, I lost, uh, many of my, my decorative trees, but, um, that was because of the drought. Ms. Pilbeli Peña.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Engler. My question is, what do cities do with the municipal golf courses?
So, uh, again, um, there's going to be cutbacks everywhere on water use. Um, but at least I consider our golf, our public golf courses, um, recreation, active turf, they're used actually every day, all day. So, we'll have discussions about, uh, what sort of water they may be able to use. Our stage-four drought conditions actually has a one-day, um, exception for parks and active play sites. So, again, it comes down to, can we achieve the conservation as a community that we need to achieve? And if we can do that, then I don't think, uh, Cuyagus, or Metropolitan, or anybody else is going to care, uh, if we water our, our golf course one day a week or two days a week, as long as we've reduced our overall water use and purchasing from Cuyagus.
Now, is the city as a purveyor going to look at each household's water usage to see that they have reduced it by 50%? Because if someone is using water now 500-plus CCFs and reducing it to 250, that's still, still astoundingly much, much more than the average household. So, what do we do in that case?
So, we will be, um, targeting our outreach efforts and really trying to drive people to, uh, either one-day, a, one-day-a-week water use, or, um, or that reduction down to just indoor use plus very efficient outdoor use. Currently, our tier system is designed, uh, 13 units of water a month. That is designed for indoor use and some outdoor use. Again, as I stated, most of our condominiums, our townhomes, they use less than 10. So, we will, we will know who those heavy water users are, and we will be working with them to try to reduce their water use down to a, an equitable level. Now, I'll call that. It may not be 10, but it should be down to 30 instead of 300.
Or 50 instead of 500?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Not sure if...
Mr. Barron? I have, I have a quick question for Mr. Finley, if you guys don't mind. Um, in terms of, um, I mean, we are looking at, I think it was 16, $1,600 per acre foot, is that what I remember?
$1,600 is currently what we pay.
And then, if we don't do our reductions, we will net a $2,000 fine for each acre foot over the amount that we're allowed it. Is that right? So, basically, more than, more than, uh, double the price. Uh, that would go, we would be the, the payer of that fine, correct? If our, if our citizens don't comply with the types of reductions that would be required.
That is correct. And, 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 and the council may choose to put in place some penalties for over, over water use or excessive water use, which could help to offset some of that cost, if that's one of the action items that the council could take.
We should, we, yeah, I'm, I'm, I hope we were able to discuss that, uh, when you come back to us. Mr. McNamee.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Question I have regarding the amount of reduction conservation each home does. If a home is already being very conservative, and they're, let's say, at 10 CCFs, there's not much level lower they can go in conservations. How do we handle something like that? To ask them to go to five would not work. How, how do we work this into the system for those that are already conserving, not to penalize them? Talk to me about how we can solve this.
So, again, I, I mentioned targeted, targeted outreach and targeted enforcement. Um, that person who is already efficiently using their water, uh, would, we, we know, we know how much every, every customer uses, and, uh, that person who is already very efficiently using water, uh, we won't, we won't be, we won't, I, I would not recommend, and again, it's up to the council, but I would not recommend any sort of penalty for those folks that are using water efficiently.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, you had a question?
Yeah, uh, just two things. Number one, what percentage less water do drought, drought-tolerant plants use over normal plants?
Well, if you use California natives, you don't have to water them at all because they're the native plants that would be here if we weren't here. So, um, and then there are different levels of drought-tolerant plants. I mean, the natives generally do better. If you give them a little bit of water, they'll stay, you know, in flower or greener for more of the year, but literally, you can have a native garden without watering at all.
Okay. The other thing is, you know, I, I know this has come on us really suddenly, at least to me, and I'm trying to just think about how to do this with our, uh, residents. And Al spoke about the beautiful lawns and lovely residential neighborhoods that we have, and, and we certainly do. But, but I think we need a campaign, if possible, to stress the fact that we're all in this together, and that is like appeal to the patriotism or to the public spirit of our residents, rather than threaten them with penalties. In other words, I think we ought to try to have a public relations campaign as we go into this period to, to inspire people to, to say, you know, there's nothing compared to what's going on in Ukraine, right? That they're all inspired to save their country. Well, this is a group effort of a much lower, uh, intensity and, and, you know, no danger to fatalities or any, of fatality. But I think that, that there must be a way that we can appeal to like local patriotism, uh, to say, we're all in this together, and, and stressing that we're doing this for the greater good of everybody, and each person needs to do his part. You know, rather than stress, you know, if you do this, you're going to get that penalty. I knew, I know they have to know the penalties, but I don't think we ought to stress that. I think we ought to stress the positive contributions that everybody can make in this difficult time. We're all in it together.
Mr. Powers?
Yeah, just to, uh, speak to that, I agree wholeheartedly, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jones. You know, the key for us is going to be to ensure that that outreach campaign is done in conjunction with Cuyagus and the other two purveyors, so that, uh, folks that live in your neighborhood that are, um, those Cal Water folks and folks that live in New bury Park, Cal M folks are hearing the same thing, it's a ubiquitous message across the board. The other component that I think is very important is targeted outreach, and I, you've heard the team mention part of that targeted outreach. One of the benefits I think we have here is we have a rich HOA tradition here in this community. And the last drought, one of the things that's not talked about very much, but I think is very important to mention, is we saw some levels of turf reduction, but not much. Most of the conservation that was achieved was because we took out, what was the square footage of? It, it was an astronomical amount of turf grass in medians. Um, our golf course did a massive renovation, taking out significant amounts of turf grass, and CRPD was probably one of the single biggest sources of turf reduction, ornamental turf reduction anywhere. And so, that's why the messaging here really has to be that those entities have done their part. We have more to do here, City Hall, some of these other intersection areas to be demonstrations, but, you know, the really important factor here is working targetedly with these HOAs and some of these extremely high-water use, users to ensure equitability, um, for those that are conserving.
Very good. I think we have a receive and file here. Um, I don't think we need any action on it. I think actually in some respects, what, uh, Mr. Powers said earlier, is a, uh, a benefit to us. We're the first out of the blocks to learn about this, and, and all my friends in the, in the community. This is going to be a big thing coming to us, and I really appreciate what Councilmember Jones said. This is one of those moments where we're going to have to pull together to make it really work. Uh, and, uh, that this is the only way we're going to get through this summer, and then hopefully we'll have a nice winter next year, and we'll take some of the pressure off. But going back to what, um, my, my colleague, Mr. McNamee, has, has intimated on numerous occasions, um, the days of the big green lawn are maybe coming to an end in, in our area, and I think that we have to really think about how we're going to landscape our homes into the future. But for the immediate, uh, immediate next few months, we're going to have to pull together as a team and really make this work. So, uh, I would take a, um, receive and file motion if I have one.
Like to move?
Mayor? Just one quick comment, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to address the speaker. I think his name was Mr. Scott. He, he mentioned the, uh, I think he was referring to the oaks on the Nazarebekean property.
Yes.
And, uh, I just want to assure Mr. Scott that there are zero plans, no plans to touch those three legacy oaks on that property. We understand the value of those oaks. They've been there a long time, and they're going to be, they're a long time from now, so... And then, the other, I think Mr. Finley summed it up when he said, "We're in an emergency." And it's... and it's starting to dawn on all of us that that's exactly what we're in and we're going to have to work together. And I just hope we can kind of temper the penalty business with also trying to work with the residents because this is a big shift in, in attitude that we're going to have to try to accomplish here, so. But I think we can do it, you know? It's a good thing.
Our staff has given us a head start.
Yeah.
And we should take advantage of that.
Yeah.
Ms. Pilar Le Penya?
No, I'm glad that much more attention is being given to this now. It's unfortunate that it's taking an emergency, but this is something that people in Southern California should have been doing already. And I turned my garden to a drought tolerant garden many, many years ago and, and I like Mr. Finley's proposal or idea not to punish those who are at or even below usage per household. And so I would not like that because I don't know if I can get any lower than what I have right now and it's pretty, pretty darn low. So, but I'm in a different district. I'm not with the city, so. And all of, and we are all in this together. You are absolutely right about that. Yes. Hopefully we will be successful. It's a very small window, as we heard, and, but with enough outreach and a very strong outreach, hopefully everybody will get the word. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to Cuyagus for your wonderful presentation. I'd like to move that we receive the report and file it. Thank you.
Very good. Do we need a vote, Madam Clerk, on the receive and file?
Since we have a motion, yes.
Very good. Then let's do the, the vote.
Councilmember Pilar Le Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We have nothing else on the agenda tonight. We have some closing comments, I think, from our city manager.
Yes, thanks so much. Just next meeting, two weeks from tonight, annual goal setting session will be held, golden priority session will be held in the founder's room. And, and as if, as if it's the ultimate irony, as you step outside, I just got a notification that it's going to start raining at 9:45 tonight. So there is a sold out show that is concluding right now out of the theater, so please be careful on departure. There'll be 1,800 folks storming into the parking structure.
Well, I'm going to let, I'm going to let my family know to put some buckets outside and see if we can capture some of that rain. But folks, let's, let's take this seriously and let's really make sure that we pull together. With that, I call the meeting to a German.